Okay. If I can get everybody's attention, please. I'm gonna ask that you let us get started here. This is Monday, April 10th, 2017. It's 4:30-ish in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. We're going to, we're gonna roll right downhill tonight. We've got a busy schedule tonight, so we're gonna ask that everybody be cooperative with us. Number two, we have a public hearing for consideration of transient grant application. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. This resolution is for our annual apportionment from the DOT for STA and FTA funding. It looks like we'll have a little bit of an increase in STA funding at the dollar figure where I have that up. Two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, five-ninety for STA and four-hundred-and-nine, or four-hundred-one, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand in FTA. On the traffic improvement plan, the TIP associated with our capital purchasing, I have four buses on there, two medium duty and two light duty. We currently have two of the medium duties budgeted in our budget. Should an exorbitant amount of money come available for capital, it's good to have those numbers in there, so you can get them replaced.
How much amount of money?
Well, if the matching comes through on the medium duties, it'll be twenty-seven-thousand, three-eighty-three per bus, and then the light duties will be fourteen-thousand, eight-fifty. So it's an eighty-five, fifteen percent match with those grants. So the previous bus that we bought, we've bought with our, only with our money. The, two of the buses, the two medium duties are higher on, the DOT has a scoring ranking based on the number of miles and the age of the bus. It's called the PTMS ranking. The two medium duties that are at the top of the list were within five points of being replaced last year, so they have a pretty strong likelihood of getting grant funded this year.
Good deal.
And we definitely have had some problems with those two, so it'd be nice to get them rolled out and replaced with some new ones, but that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I guess I'd be answering those.
Any questions, council?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Nick, where'd we get you from? Just hold on to that telegraph.
I'm Riley.
That's right. Okay. Good deal. Next, we have a public hearing in consideration of a permit encroachment agreement with Martha Wolf for encroachment into Washington Street right-of-way at 313 Washington Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisner?
Yeah, show a map, and then Jesse, our engineer, has some information as well. This is a request to place a deck off of the front of the property at 313 Washington Street, just down the street here from City Hall. This is a residential structure. These are a couple photos of where they're looking to place the deck. There's an existing doorway on Washington Street right-of-way. It's kinda hard to see with the lights here, but, and wanting to have the deck come off of that doorway, unfortunately, there's a light pole right adjacent to the doorway, but they're looking to maintain the minimum standards through the encroachment is four feet. This is a little more unique than some of our other encroachment requests, in that most of those are for ADA access into a site through a handicap accessible ramp or stairs, as well as some barriers for public use such as outdoor seating. This would simply be a deck that could be used for access for the property there at 313 Washington Street. I'm gonna show on the PowerPoint here just some information from the Public Works standpoint and their standards, so.
So as Eric was saying, here's just some of the stats. The proposed location is on, on the picture there. The existing sidewalk is eleven foot, five inches wide. The clearance between the building and the base of that white there is seven foot, three inches, and with the proposed structure, it would cut that down to four foot, seven inches. Next slide here is basically a mock-up of what they're proposing to attach to the structure. The biggest number on there is the depth of the porch. It's thirty-two inches into the right-of-way. Everything else, you know, is fairly inconsequential. And then on the next slide, we looked into the ADA ramifications of adding this on. They do provide for a forty-eight inch travel width around poles and everything. It's the graphic on the left there towards the bottom, that forty-eight inch minimum, you know, around a pole. So it is within ADA compliance for handicap people. And as long, I don't have a really good detail on, you know, how high the support is off the ground, but it looks like, if you look to the right picture there, the area of cane detection, it looks like you would be able to pick it up with a cane as well. So from what I can see, everything is ADA compliant. It's just up to everybody here whether, you know, the encroachment is acceptable for this type of structure.
Jim, wanna add anything on that?
This is really a preference issue on your part. This is a policy. I don't have anything to add. They're saying they're okay with it. It's just a matter of whether you feel this is acceptable to the public or not.
What's our minimums been? They've been five feet.
What happened over, we had an issue come up with, over by, hopefully yours?
Yeah, the, generally, it's five, and Jesse might be, talk a little bit more on that.
So that was our original determination, was the, you know, it's five feet. But as we got to looking into it closer, you know, they'll let you go that sixty-inch minimum that you see in the left picture, but if your forty-eight inch restriction is for less than two feet, so around a pole or something like we're doing here, they'll let you get by with it as long as that restriction isn't over two feet through travelway.
But with, hopefully...
I think they were less than four feet even.
Did we, was it less than four feet, and we had to get them to four feet there?
Yeah, they had to remove the pole, which got them more than four feet ultimately, but the uniqueness of this, too, is that most of the time, it's for ADA access to a building. This is just a deck off the front. They would like to use, I guess, for fire escape or whatever it may be, but it's just unique that it's not providing access to the building, so we wanted to just note that. It's a little different than what we've had, be brought forward to the council before, and our encroachment policy just talks about preserving the sidewalk and for the property owners and for the city of Burlington, and reducing and minimizing encroachments where deemed necessary. But just wanted to bring the uniqueness of it, point that out to you, that it's just different than what we've had before.
Right on.
But it's a policy that you guys get to choose what you wanna do with it.
And Tom is here. I don't know if he wanted to say anything in specific, other than what we've covered?
Well, other than...
Tom, can I get you to come, can I get you to come up and give us your name and address? And yeah, please do, since you're here, share with us, please.
My name is Tom Wolfe, and I'm representing Martha. And the issue we have is that originally had a double front door, which over the years was sealed up. I don't know if the side that was up there shows it. And where that is located, the stairway from the second floor comes right down to that doorway, you see right there. And our concern is if there was some sort of need to get out of the building, those doors should be able to open, and that would just basically be a platform for someone to get over or be rescued from. And it's, the plan showed it as being thirty-two inches, which is basically enough to open the doors, so.
So there's no steps involved?
There's no steps. It's right against the building, as you can see, the buildings, the sidewalk slopes. It'll be right off those double doors and have railing around.
Just a small...
Yeah. And it's metal.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Counsel, did you guys have any other?
So in reference to your five feet, then we're down to four-seven. Is that the way I'm reading that?
Right. But it's only, the four-sevens only where the light poles at.
Where the light is.
Yeah. Or it's five feet.
Right.
I don't see that, for me, being an issue.
Good. You good?
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Jim.
Good deal. Thanks again, Tom. Okay. Next, we have consideration of plan specifications for the 2017 flood mitigation phase five.
We have Leo Foley here, Veenstrom Kim, so let me kinda go over what this project's looking for.
All right, here we go.
Axel Foley. I've been waiting to say that. I gotta squeeze it in. I'm sure you have.
Leo Foley with Veenstrom Kim. Okay, a lot of this presentation, a lot of you have seen before, but I thought since the plans are, it's been a long time in planning and design, and we're finally here to start for the advertising for the public hearing. Phase five demolition, the restoration, construction cost, schedule, permit status, our next steps. That's what I wanted to go through. Of course, this is what we have now. I think everybody's seen that. This one, I think you guys have seen, but the blue shows our flood wall footing. The footing, I think I've told you, there's gonna be two, two rows of H piles that go down fifty foot, the whole length of that footing.
Wow.
On the downstream side, where you don't have sheet pile, there's gonna be sheet pile also. On the upstream side, where the port building is and where the sheet pile ends, you're gonna, we're gonna do additional sheet pile to keep from flow coming underneath of us. The red line just shows the minimum extent of excavation. The purple line, of course, shows where the flood wall is. This is demolition and construction staging. The orange is the extent of the demolition, so all of the orange will be demolished for the wall and for the foundation, and then will have to be restored. The yellow is construction staging, lay-down areas, areas that they're gonna need during construction. The whole staging area and demolition area will be fenced off with chain link fencing and gated, so people will have to gate, come in and out through gates.
How much, how much total space? Do you have an idea how much total space that is of the orange that's actually?
I do not right now. I would gather three or four acres.
Yeah, I didn't know it was gonna be quite that big of a...
Yes. This, this parking lot up in here, because of that, we have to redo that parking lot in order to get our wall in there and all that, and to make the grades work right. So that, that from there down is gonna be a new parking lot, just to change the grade slightly.
How much more can we get, like another, like a couple levels for a couple...
The wall will get us there. Okay, so this is what our phase five restoration is gonna look like. So that's the, kind of the looking down the streets, you'll be able to look out on here, the green space in here. This'll all be a type of, a type of concrete. There'll be basically a path that runs along here, all the way out to the bottom. So that's how that's gonna, gonna be the phase five restoration. Little bit on the schedule. Advertise for public hearing today, the public hearing April 17th. Then we post the notice to bidders on April 18th. We receive bids on May 10th. Counsel to award construction, of course, if everything goes right, on May 15th. Notice to proceed after steamboat days on June 30th. Substantial completion, meaning complete enough so they can have steamboat days the next, on the 18th, so almost a year construction to get this thing done. Final completion September 30th. Oh, sorry about the, it's not quite as big. Costs, I think we've, we've been over before. The underground concrete and foundation is where we had a big number that we didn't expect to be quite so big, I think $2.5 million on the underground. So that means for the whole project, a construction cost estimate of about $6.5 million. And then we feel, because of the type of conditions, river, all of that, that you should at least have 10% contingency available during the construction, which is pretty normal. That gets you to the $7.2 million. This shows what essentially the wall's gonna look like. So on the left-hand side, that's the wall. You'll see the little marks here, and that's where these struts go in, and then the temporary wall goes between it. I think as we talked about, that wall's gonna be at about the same height as the fence that's down there now, which is about the hundred-year flood. So if we all are lucky, maybe we never even see this put up, but it could be put up this year. I mean, that's the luck of the draw. You just never know. I built one that was a 500-year flood in Burlington, one of my very first projects when I was a lot younger than I am today, or not in Burlington, excuse me, Hannibal. In Hannibal...
I was gonna say, man, your work isn't very good, 'cause I don't...
Hannibal, Missouri. And I remember, one of the structural engineers told me, you'll never see this project tested. And then 2001 or '02, whatever it was, they had close to the 500-year levy, and they were talking about putting sandbags on top of it.
Wow.
So you never know, and since that time, I don't think they've ever really tested that one. This one, we know that wall's gonna protect a lot up to the 100-year, and gonna, gonna make maintenance around here a way different issue. This is just giving you some other views of what that's gonna look like. You'll see these, these metal plates on top, and you take those plates off, and that's how the pin will sit right down in there. Nick and his crew are all excited about being able to put this thing up. They've gone to, they've gone to Davenport. Davenport has showed theirs off many a times, how well they can put it together. The bidder that gets this for putting up the wall will put the whole thing up before he's done. So that's part of our specifications. We did deliver plans and specifications to engineering and to planning today, 100% done. So the bidder that gets this has to install it all the way up before it's, before it's This is just showing what the railing in general will look like when there's not a wall. There's places where there's no wall, because they'll have complete temporary, temporary walls in those places, and they'll have to be railed off. This is kind of what that railing would look like. This is what the patterns will look like in the concrete. We've worked with your staff quite a bit to make sure that this is gonna be a type of block that'll be easily to maintain, easy to replace if there's a problem. The same with the concrete patterns. This is gonna be a concrete that's gonna just be sandblasted, so that they can easily replace it and make the pattern. A lot of times, projects like this, color becomes a problem. We're gonna have the color be a very natural color. So we're thinking ahead, trying to make sure everybody's operate and maintain and be able to get this thing correct. This just shows pictures of the future, the complete build-out in some future stage. We're not really focusing on this. I just wanted people to see. That's the goal. That's where we're going. We haven't talked a lot with you guys, but we have talked with your staff a lot about lighting, different types of light for different areas. Generally, you'll see this. The lighting is not supposed to be a feature of this project. There's other things that we're showing off. The lighting's supposed to just fit in and look nice. So there'll be, whoops, there'll be three basic types of lighting. At the flood wall, you'll see wall like this. There's also gonna be some seating lighting, so there's concrete benches that will lay there, and you'll see lighting in the seating. But in general, you'll see relatively shorter poles by the river, higher poles as you get to the parking lot, and then in the middle of the parking lot, of course, that kind of pole. You see a lot of this directional lighting. So up near the port in the amenity, the auditorium building, you'll see a lot of directional lighting. Where we have the flags for the Veterans Memorial, you'll have a lot of directional-type lighting. And this just shows the whole plan again, making sure that this first phase fits in with the whole big picture of the future phases on lighting. Again, that, now we just focus back onto, onto phase five for lighting. Again, like I was telling you, this is some of the directional type, type of lights, whoops, that we have in mind, that are now specked into the specifications. This is an interesting one. We just, we decided, how are we gonna do lighting, and we were, they were worried about, do we wanna put, like, lighting on the flood wall? Well, we decided we didn't wanna actually put lighting on the flood wall. The landscape architects decided the flood wall would look, you know, again, you're trying to emphasize other stuff, not the wall itself. But wherever we have openings out to the river, they're gonna have a lighted, a lighted railing, so they put lighting in the railing.
That's actually really cool.
Railings swings back. It'll look really cool, yeah. So that's, that's just showing you a little bit of that feature. Okay, another thing that people had talked about, that maybe we, everybody wasn't clear about, I think the steering committee and the staff is, but the intent, of course, is to have this river walk that goes all the way through, through the, through the project. The port building eventually, to have some kind of building here, but right now, to have a connection. And that connection means we take this part of the port building off. So that's what everybody needs to know, is that, that comes off, so we can build our wall, and it gives us more space. We've talked to the people at the port, we've talked to your Public Works. I think everybody's in favor. So this is kind of, again, what it, what it looks like now, what it'll look like then. And then this picture, which didn't show up quite as great, shows what the final product will look like in that area. And again, that's all in there. Next thing is, I wanted to talk about permits. I talked to, Kelly Stone is the head of the section that gives you a permit for floodplain work like this at the DNR. We had to provide him enough modeling and enough to get a, what's called a no-rise certification, saying this project is not gonna cause a rise during the 100-year. We have modeled it extensively, remodeled it for him, and he has pretty much said, we're happy with the no-rise certificate. He hasn't given me the paperwork yet, but even today, he said, I don't have any issues with the no-rise. That's not gonna be a problem. You'll see this, this phase had no pump stations in it. We knew the pump stations come in a future phase. This shows a pump, I think, one of your pumps. So what he wanted to do is, he wanted to see how much pumping capability you had during a flood. So I had your staff put together what pumps you had, and then what they made us do is model a 100-year flood on the Mississippi River, close the, you won't close gates, but the gate on the up, the upstream where we have to redirect flow and we'll have to, on very upstream of the port, what happens if you get a 10-year rain right over the port building and the auditorium during the 100-year flood? Very, very rarely it happens, but that, that's like, they consider that the worst-case situation that could ever happen. So you're gonna get a six-inch rain right on top of when you're having a 100-year flood. How do you get that flow out of there? So your staff told me you have three pumps that pump 1,200 gallons a minute. Those are big pumps. Thirty-six-hundred gallons per minute can be pumped. We figured out you're gonna need at least four, maybe six more of those, if you got this flood. So what the state is gonna make us do is write a letter that's gonna say, the city has the ability, and if it's predicted, you're gonna get the 100-year storm, then the city will have a location they can get flood, they can get pumps. And there's a pump supplier that's relatively close, they're, they're out of Kansas City, but they have somebody that, one of their salesmen's like one or two hours from here. They produce, they can produce 3,000 gallon-per-minute pumps. That's Monster Pump. Yours are twelve, yours are six-inch, these are 12-inch. 12-inch pumps, and they produced 52 of them in two days for Cedar Rapids last, I think it was last year. Fifty-two of those in two days they got. So if you, so what we'll have to do is have a plan here that if you get the 100-year flood, and you know, here, we'll predict a 100-year flood a week ahead of time. If you get the 100-year flood, then you probably will have to go get pumping to have it on hand. And if, as you can see from that pump right there, that's the situation they don't wanna have. They don't wanna see you get in a situation where you got so much water, it's inundating the pumps, and all that kind of stuff. So I think it's a wise move. We'll put that plan together. I, I can have it to him tomorrow, actually, and I think we'll be, we'll be, we'll be fine. Their job really is to look at the worst-case scenario.
Right on.
And what they don't wanna do is have you build a flood protection project, get a, not have a pump station yet, and get a flood on the interior and have a worse one.
That wouldn't be good.
Have a worse one. And I will tell you, Rock Island has a major flood protection project built by the Corps of Engineers, and they have no pump stations. So they do this temporary pumping every single year, every time they have to, they put these temporaries out. So it's not something that won't be approved. It'll definitely get approved, but you just need to come up with a solid plan in writing that tells them at this elevation, the city does this, and I can provide that for you. Oh, the next thing is that, whoops. You doing it? Go to the last slide. Second to last slide. It's the one that showed the, that one right there. Okay. This is, so our next phase, we talked about doing a pump station. This is a big pump station down in New Orleans, but it shows very, very nicely what's going on here. You're not pumping a lot ahead. You're not pumping very high. You're pumping from one side down here, up over a wall. Sanitary pumps, your wastewater director, they'll pump 30, 40 feet. You're gonna have to pump 10, 10 to 15 feet. So it's not a, it's not a huge head, but still, they're, they're big pump stations. So the next slide, and we showed this to you in a very early version of our planning, is you have a lot of different options for pump stations. This is one in Muscatine. I'd call it a very inexpensive one. This is a Cadillac that's in Des Moines right now, on, on one of their main downtown areas. These are in Corvill, and I'd call them middle-of-the-road pump stations, would you say? They're not, they're not architecturally significant, but they're very effective. Our thoughts are, and I know Jim has said we have to be careful with money, right now we know this first phase is running over money. How are we gonna save money in the future? My thoughts are, we build a pump station like this, where it's similar to this, it's an enclosure, it's not a building. The pump station, the generator inside, you make the, the architecture kind of look like what the other buildings are down there. You pretty it up a little bit on the inside, but it's certainly not something like that. And I think we could save a quarter of a million dollars on each pump station by doing them this way. So we have two of them, we could save a half a million dollars by not putting them in nice buildings and putting them in so they're kind of an outdoor type of pump station with a generator. I think you have to have a generator for this type of project, so that's...
You're just curious, how much for the Toyota in the left-hand corner? How much you save, how much you save on that jobby?
Oh, you mean this one?
Yes, sir.
I'd have to, I will, I have to get back to you on prices, but I think it could be more.
I was just, really? For the Escort?
You could, yes. I saw one in Myland, Illinois. These pump stations have definitely caught my eye lately. I saw one in Myland, Illinois, that basically didn't even have any kind of a building hardly. It looked like the flow comes to a big manholes, and then it pumps, and the pipes come right up out of the ground and right over. Now, that's, that's the cheapest way you could possibly do it, but in your case, there is some option to pump with, from manholes, you'll have, you'll be behind a thing, and to either put it right in your box and have it so you won't even see it. So we, we, I'll come back to you with some options. That, that's something that we're definitely very interested in, is what could we do? 'Cause the first one's gonna fit in behind the auditorium, so it's gonna be out of, out of sight a lot of times, so we could see on that one. So that's all I had, unless somebody has questions. You know? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leo.
You mentioned the cost on this is in that $7 million range. Well, we have to wait and see what we get for bids back. It'd be nice if it was lower than that. We borrowed just over $5 million for this phase. If the costs do come in at that $7 million phase, we've talked about the need next calendar year to do a second borrowing to cover the remainder of this project. We're capped out for what we can borrow this section anyway, plus we don't know where those numbers are actually gonna come in at.
So you, you borrow, and then the grant money pays it back eventually?
Correct.
Okay. I, I really do, I mean, I don't mean to be weaseling on you, but this is a very challenging project for bidders to bid. challenging project for bidders to bid. Not many people drive H-piling 50 feet that many. We do it all the time. Every pump station has driven H-pile a lot of times. But to drive the amount that are going to be driven for this project, we're hoping we get a nice low bid, because somebody comes in and says, hey, I've got to mobilize. You know, a lot of times when you do borings, it costs you, uh, two, you know, $2,000 to do the first boring, and then 200 bucks a boring afterwards, because it mobilized to get. So we're kind of hoping we get that kind of big benefit, but we haven't shown it yet. We, we have not shown that. We showed it as, here's how much it is. We called around, we talked to Blackhawk Foundations, is one of the biggest pile-driving companies. They're out of Moline, I believe. We talked specifically to them, and the number we used was a number they said that we should use. So we think that's a reasonable number. Sometimes they tell engineers one number, and then when bidding time comes and they think there's competi, competition, who knows?
Do you have to build a temporary flood wall in order to work on this, to keep the water back, or can they just go right?
They can, they're going to, we're not, we're, we're leaving your, your river wall in place. So your river wall should protect you.
All right.
And then we're telling them they have to work in the dry, so they're going to have to pump. And depending on what river levels are, depending on how much, that's another risk for them. I don't, it's a hard risk of how much they're going to charge for that. Some guys take little risk and they charge a lot, and they don't get the bid, you know, you just, you don't know. I, I, I know one, the bidder that built the Atumwa project for us, which is very similar, will be bidding on this project, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you.
All right. Number five, consideration of plans and specifications of the 2017 Depot Storm Sewer Improvements.
Jesse Howes, City Engineer again. So what we have in front of you now is the plans and specs for the Depot Storm Sewer. Basically, what we're doing with this project, the existing drainage drains to the south and through BNSF's property. It has some known issues in it, and it's basically to the point where it provides a slow trickle-out when we get big rain events, water ponds on the south side, and we do have a water problem under the building where we'll get, I think, two to three feet of water under the building in the crawl space, which, from talking to a few people, that never used to happen 10 years back. So to remedy all that, we are putting in new lines and draining everything to the north to our, our storm system to get it out of the vicinity. Again, like I said, it'll eliminate all of our ponding issues that we're currently experiencing. The quick and dirty summary on this one, the engineer's estimated cost is $368,000. The budget and funds for the 17, 18 sewer miscellaneous rehab is half a million, so we're well within budget. I do expect those numbers to come in a little bit less after I reviewed their engineering estimate. They use pricing that's typically higher than we see in southeast Iowa, but I guess we'll see. Tentative schedule on this, if everything goes according to plan, we would receive bids in mid-May, award a contract June 7th, start construction June 19th, and finish September 8th with 60 working days allotted for the project. Got any questions?
That takes in not just the facility itself, the roof, does, takes in the roof drains off of Amtrak?
Yeah, basically, we're providing a, a place where all of those roof drains and everything could be funneled back into the storm outlet to the street. That'll, that's what's eliminating all the ponding water under the building.
That, that was one of the things they had a concern with, with us, was coming up with and addressing an issue they were having, if they were to ever get to their project of rehabbing that, those structures.
How long are we holding our breath for that?
Five years so far, I have.
All right, you guys good?
Yep.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Number six, resolution approving the mayor's participation in Fireball Run and authorizing the expenditure of funds to participate. I see we have our friends from the chamber, you guys want to come on? Come on down.
Good evening, Jason Hutchison with the Greater Burlington Partnership, which operates the Convention and Visitors Bureau here in our community, and with me is Chelsea Toll, the Director of the CBB. And thanks for the opportunity to come and give you some insight into Fireball Run and, and perhaps shed some light on a, a couple of things. So I do want to talk about Fireball Run, really what it is. And Fireball Run is a travel adventure series where the participants and those watching the show really discover what they call is the undiscovered places. So they don't go to Disney World, they don't go to Las Vegas, they go to places like Fort Dodge, Iowa, and places like Burlington, Iowa, to, to show the world, really, it, it has a global audience, what communities in this country have to offer. And so it's, this isn't the Price is Right, this isn't Wheel of Fortune, this is not a game show. In fact, I would say that calling it a game show is really a reckless mischaracterization of a Fireball Run. But now, it is true, there are teams as a part of this, so the show follows teams that travel throughout the, the routes, and there are roughly 40 teams. Many of the teams, most of the teams are made up of either celebrities or high-profile individuals or high-net-worth individuals, typically owners of large companies or executives from those companies. And, and that helps build some, some of the, the aspects of the show, but they really go on a seven or eight-day adventure where they're stopping at different communities along that route, doing neat things in those communities. We would certainly show off Snake Alley, there would be another, a number of amenities in our community that a worldwide audience hasn't discovered yet, and this is our opportunity to, to show them that. So it is streamed on Amazon Live, so anyone who's got an Amazon Prime membership has access to that in the United States. Now internationally, it's actually broadcast on network television in a number of countries across the globe. So it is an internationally syndicated show with a, a global following. And the CBB is really involved because we learned that the show was considering a Midwest route this year. They take a different route every year, and so our job, one of the reasons you have a contract with us, is to promote the community to the best of our ability, and a lot of credit to team members in our office, including Chelsea, for getting them interested enough in the community to make the journey here and to see what it is we have to offer. And after spending a couple of days here, the producers really fell in love with what we have to offer. Not only do they think a global audience would have interest in it, but they were, our hospitality as a community was very generous and gracious to them, and so they, they thoroughly enjoyed their, their time here, which is great for us, because that secured our spot in the, in the series. That will air in the fall of 2018, it'll be filmed in the fall of 2017. And we can't talk about where they're going in town, because there is a competitive aspect, they do get clues as to the attractions, and so those 40 teams have to find out where those attractions are based upon those clues. So we, we can't let the cat out of the bag, we'd get in trouble for that. But, so where does the mayor's participation lie in all of this? So of course, we're going to rally the community around, the contestants, the, the folks come to, come to the community, the, the teams discover the, the areas, we have a rally here where everyone from the community can come, welcome the teams to our communities, there's a reception while they're here this evening, in that, in that evening. And so we're going to have lots of folks involved in this. But how about the mayor specifically? Well, when, when you have a pretty big event, come to your community, it's, it's, it's great for the mayor to be involved with that. And when the mayor was here, and the producers of the show were here, they were, they were impressed with him, and I would say this, whether you were in the room or not, Mayor McCambell, but they, they were impressed meeting the mayor, and noted that he's an incredibly charismatic individual who has, is able to, to connect with people in a way that most of us can't, and would, would be a great member of, of a team. And as a host community, we have one team. Out of the 40 teams, we're required to have one team. It helps give our local folks an ability to, to follow someone from their, from their hometown in that journey across the Midwest. And so we have a two-member team, there's a, a registration fee that we had to pay for. As Chelsea and I worked on the budget, we built that registration fee into the cost of holding the event. And so we had to find two team members, and there are certain criteria of what can classify you for, for the team. And as we got to thinking about it, it would be great for the mayor to be one of those team members, because on the journey, they're spending a lot of time with 39 other teams, many of which have substantial means, many of which have personal followings, and if, if we can have members from our community be great ambassadors during that event, it opens up all sorts of opportunities. In fact, I'll pass these around, we created booklets that every team member is, is going to get, showing economic development opportunities, buildings within our community that have the potential to be redeveloped, some economic stats talking about our resurgence as a community. And so I think, at a point in time where our community has an incredible story to tell, and we have, we have a mayor who is very charismatic, very passionate about this community, and able to connect that story, it makes perfect sense for him to be a part of, of not only the journey, but also of the celebration when we come to our community. Now, he's taken a, a lot of heat, I know, both personally and, and in public for participation in this, but I got to tell you, I think it's the job of the mayor not just to sit at the center of that table and run a meeting, but it's also the job of the mayor to tell the story of our community, especially when it's a story worth telling. And we asked the mayor to give up eight to 10 days of his life to be on this journey representing our community. And, and I'm grateful that he said, he said yes. So then it comes down to the question of, well, how does it get paid for? So we built the cost of, it's a mandatory cost of, of the event, we built that into our budget. Your attorney issued a legal opinion saying that, that as a CBB, we can't pay for that. I don't agree with that interpretation necessarily, but nonetheless, he's an attorney, and he's your attorney, so I don't think you have much of a choice but to listen to him on, on that opinion. So what was before you then was a request to pay up to $7,500 for the mayor's participation as a team member in this. That should more than cover it, the registration fee, the mandatory registration fee, and, and the, the mandatory costs associated with that are likely going to be under $12,000 total, half of which would be less than, less than six, but it's possible, there's got to be transportation to the start of the event and back from the end of that event, and so we'd want to make sure that there was, there were dollars there to cover that transportation, because we certainly don't want to cross any lines that, that we shouldn't cross in this process. So that's really, I think, why we're before you today is perhaps to explain a little bit more about Fireball Run. I hope you'll support this. It's really a rare opportunity to showcase our community to an internationally syndicated audience. What happens if you fail to approve it? Well, I guess the mayor won't participate, and that's not the end of the world. I think it's a lost opportunity, and so, but that's, that's your decision to make. So with that, I'll probably kick it to Chelsea if there are any questions, but anything on your mind?
Does that put you in the driver's seat with Chad, then, if Shane doesn't go?
Uh, I don't, I don't have any idea what we'll do. We'll have to talk to the producers about how to handle that. I don't know, but I will tell you that we'll figure it out.
You're going to go ahead regardless, I mean?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
This, this is, this is a good opportunity for our community, and so we're going to participate to the fullest. They, they like our community, and we want to ensure that the Fireball Run groups have a great experience here.
And I think our mayor is a logical person to be a part of this, no question in my mind.
Chelsea, do you have anything to add, or were there any other questions? We good?
I guess, do you know if they have done any sort of marketing with the team members that have already been chosen? You know, with names and things like that?
Names are already submitted.
Chelsea, can you come to the microphone, please, Chelsea?
The teams that have been submitted, their names are already on the Fireball Run website, but as far as marketing those out to the mass public, I don't think they have done that quite yet.
One of the questions that was asked by Jim last meeting was about the other communities in Iowa. Fort Dodge, I think, is planning on having their mayor participate. I'm not sure how to, who's representing them as a community, but, but we wouldn't be the only community where that would be the case for you to have the mayor participate.
Good point, yeah. I did have a question, well, they've been doing this for like 10 or 11 years, what was, what was the deal with all the other mayors that? I mean, have they, have they?
Well, this is Iowa.
Iowa has its own unique rules.
Oh, is this the first time they've ever been in Iowa? I thought they were in Iowa before.
It's not the first time they've been in Iowa. I don't know that any other Iowa mayors have participated as a team member in the past, but Cedar Rapids has had, have they have, twice?
Had it once in 2010.
We good?
I, I honestly have received a lot of negative feedback about this, and if, if we do agree with this, I, I think, I think we ought to consider when the contract comes up for negotiations with the CBB that we factor in this expense with their new contract.
Our contract with the CBB expires the end of fiscal '18. They had a three-year contract, I'm pretty sure that's where it is, and you could certainly have that be a, a topic that you were considering when you came up with whatever your figures were for what was included in that agreement.
And as far as, as far as in the budget this year, we have travel money available, I would say that I would not go to the conference that I normally go to, the Lega Cities Conference every year, that, I think that's roughly $1,000, roughly. Stephanie, can you say per person to go to that thing?
It's pretty close.
Yeah.
It's pretty close.
So I would forego that, we want to use the travel money, but otherwise, to get reconsideration from the CBB would be good, too.
And there's been a lot of misinformation about this. I don't think people realize how this community should benefit from it. I mean, it's a, it's a very unique opportunity, I mean.
It also has a lot to do with building relationships with other people. You know, if there's people in high standing somewhere else and they're chatting up with the mayor of Burlington and he's selling the city, you know, there's, that can't be anything but good for us, as far as, you know, bringing in industry, bringing in tax growth. So it's just hard for me, I know it's, I've heard plenty of negative feedback, but people don't think about the whole picture. All they're thinking about is certain financial things that we've done recently, and this is $7,000, and that's it. They don't think about how we're promoting, we really are promoting the city. They, they really don't seem to grasp that. It's more than just him going out and solving riddles, you know? It's...
What kind of vehicle are we going to be using?
I don't have that information yet, but I'm waiting on that final word.
Okay. I had to ask.
Would the mayor drive, or would he be a passenger?
I hope he's a passenger.
I assume a very good driver? When I'm in the passenger seat?
Well, the final thing I'll say, then I'll get out of your hair, is, is, once this is all settled, whatever route you decide, we as a community will have a, then it's on us to decide how we're going to respond to Fireball Run. And you're right, unfortunately, it's been clouded a little bit in, in recent weeks, but I hope that our choice, our conscious decision after this is settled, is to embrace Fireball Run and to make sure they have the greatest experience possible, because the show will be archived on Amazon Live, perhaps into perpetuity, and so Burlington's presence on that will be locked in for, for all of history. So it's, it's important, I think, that we put our, our best foot forward.
Did you say, Chelsea, that we can use that video footage, too, for promotions after the fact?
Correct, yes.
Lot of value.
Any other questions?
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next we have... Next we have resolution amending sewer user fees effective July 1, 2017. Steph?
Yes, I'll go ahead and just talk about the next four resolutions, they're all kind of connected. These were the sewer fees that were budgeted to increase three percent in our, in the next fiscal year FY18. And then number three under consent is the solid waste fee, which is the resolution increasing the fee by the twenty-five cents, which, again, all of that is approved in our budget. This is just formally approving the rates to be billed out. Any questions on any of those?
Good job, let's keep it rolling. Resolution amending stormwater utility system fees pursuant to chapter one, zero-zero-point-zero-two of the Burlington City Code.
Yep, same thing, three percent increase.
You guys good? Uh, the next is resolution amending solid waste fees effective July 1, 2017.
Twenty-five cent increase.
Twenty-five cent increase. You guys good?
Mm-hmm.
And then, resolution amending septic hauler fees effective July 1, 2017.
Three percent increase.
You guys good? Steph, you're so good.
I'm just gonna stay here.
Next we have a resolution approving submittal of the Title VI program for the Burlington Urban Service Transit System.
Sure, this is a requirement by the Iowa Department of Transportation, we need to update this program every three years. So the last time you've seen this was in 2014. So basically, I've just updated the information with Nick McGregor's name. A lot of our items have stayed the same, we're still promoting it the same, we still have the same contract. If somebody would call in and does a spink English with the big word, they also wanna know how we have a public participation plan and how we don't discriminate. So, again, this is just updating, it's a plan we already have in place, but we just bring it back forward to you to update any of the information. Since 2014, we've had some tweaks in our schedules, times, and those have all been updated. Our buses, if they've changed, and the routes, if they've changed, but other than that, it's everything you've seen before. If you have any questions?
You guys good?
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Okay, next we have a resolution authorizing entry into an agreement with the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship related to a water quality initiative grant awarded for the construction of a Green Alley in downtown Burlington.
No one wants to talk about this. We have, your name's on this, so...
No one, no one? Or, or Mr. McGregor?
We'll see where you go with it, and I'll see if I have to go in.
I guess I signed it, 'cause mine was the only one around to sign it.
And this, this grant is IDALs, it's associated with the Green Alley project, associated with the TAMA project, they're, they're planning on doing a Green Alley, and this is the second half of the alley. This is a grant match with it. I don't know the actual, what's, is it between third and fourth? Third and fourth, Washington and Jefferson.
Yeah.
So, this is something that we are gonna be designing here, or we've already prepped on the, the maintenance side. I guess, I don't know what else you'd wanna know.
So, as this goes, this project for, for the TAMA building, they had two-hundred-thousand dollars towards green infrastructure. They're looking at doing the Green Alley. I'm not sure, talking with Charlie, if they were looking to, to use a portion of that CDBG funding towards, they had one apartment that they're looking to do as a net-zero energy usage. I'm not, I'm not sure if part of that is going towards that or not. What they do have going towards the Green Alley in this project, as we have it structured, this is looking to, budget is a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars, we're looking for seventy-five-thousand from IDALs, out of the local, a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. They, the TAMA building project would be covering about ninety-six-thousand, we'd be covering about twenty-one-thousand. For us, our match is, we had set aside a hundred thousand out of the overall flood mitigation project funds from the state to be used towards Green Alley's, and we, we count this towards that piece.
I guess maybe an explanation on what, what the term Green Alley means?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Because I had a phone call thinking that we were gonna put it back in grass. Ultimately, what it means is we would go in there and tear out the existing, do some grade prep, and Leo might be able to explain it better than me, but there's some tile work system that ultimately helps add capacity and cleans the water, but it, it's permeable pavers, so, it's, it's still a hard surface alley, so, I guess that's probably the, the easiest way to explain it.
Did we, do we ever get pictures of, of what that'll look like?
If you wanna pull up the Facebook page, there's actually a link on that, and that maybe shows a, just a visual representation on what it could look like.
Somebody, I got stopped the other day and said, and somebody asked me, "What's the city doing paying for painting alleys? Why are we painting alleys?" I said, "I didn't know we were painting alleys." Nick, why's the city painting alleys?
That's a good question, I, I don't have that answer. I know, I know the, the, the partnership leadership class is doing some cleaning, where they might be painting over top of some graffiti, but the city is not painting any alleyways, not to my knowledge.
And what do you add back there, with a brick in the middle?
Yeah, maybe. There we go. So as you can see off to the right, they have a concrete outline where they put permeable pavers in between, and what it does essentially allows water to flow over the surface and then go in between the crevices, and then filter in through the rocks. It has a cleaning mechanism to it, going through the rock bed, but also adds a lot of capacity for stormwater.
We're doing this specific alley because of the TAMA building.
Um, in conjunction with it, but there is a bigger plan for Green Alley presence, but also, you know, bio swales, the overall green infrastructure. With the SRF funding that we'll probably, we'll be using for a lot of the sewer separation, comes with a ten perc, one percent? I don't know what percentage is.
One percent.
One percent, not ten percent, that'd be a lot of money. One percent of the, of the interests that, or the amount of money that we spend can go back towards green infrastructure projects, of which a Green Alley is one of those examples.
In terms of this alley specifically, with the TAMA project, they had the CDBG funds to do a Green Alley, but that was immediately adjacent to their building. In order to see the whole alley be done, it would, it required us to be participating, and you get a better product if you have the whole alley.
Well, sure, that makes sense.
Yep.
You guys good?
Sure.
Okay. Next we have a resolution approving an amendment of access agreement with Max Convenience Stores LLC for granting access to the subject premises for the purpose of locating a remediation station and conducting environmental, environmental investigation and remediation work.
This is a continuation of an existing agreement that we've had in place for two or three years. If you look through the wording on here, they completed their Tier One work some time ago, and they're, they've been continuing with the Tier Two monitoring, they still have some additional requirements from the VNR prior to them being able to have full closure.
We good?
I don't have, from a staff perspective, are there any issues, any issues with continuation of this?
Okay, we've got some public hearings. The first is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington Inc. for encroachment into city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tissler?
Well, I have an application, they're looking to do art installation adjacent to the Art Center.
All right, I'm just gonna zip through these, if you have anything you need to... Number, number, letter B, consideration of an ordinance vacated and sell in a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street, and a portion of Alley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa. C is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Sealcoast Streets Program. D is consideration of a 2017 Amendment to Urban Renewal Plan for Burlington Consolidated, Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to Apollo Property Disposition. And E is consideration of acquisition and development agreement related to urban renewal project in connection with Apollo Property Disposition. Discussion items, recycling program, Mr. Hal Morton.
Thank you very much. I am Hal Morton, Executive Director of the Des Moines County Regional Solid Waste Commission, and it's been a while since I've been before this august body. I'm here to give an overview of, of what it is that we provide for the City of Burlington and our other members. Start off by laying down the law, according to state law, it is state policy to protect health, safety, and welfare of Iowans, to provide the most practical and beneficial use of the material and energy values of solid waste, and to follow the waste management hierarchy, which you've probably seen before, looks like this, with the most attention on conserving resources and the least attention on wasting resources. It specifically places responsibilities on every city and county in the state, based on, again, on this waste management hierarchy. Each city is required to provide a comprehensive solid waste reduction program based on the hierarchy, and you can't leave out any parts like the landfill for final disposal at the end, but state law provides that cities and counties don't have to do it on their own. They can, but they can also join together to do it cooperatively with other cities and counties. The mechanism for doing that are permits of landfills and transfer stations and comprehensive solid waste plans. Landfill permits will not be issued or renewed unless they meet all of the technical standards and are accompanied by a comprehensive plan that documents that every local government using that landfill has implemented landfill diversion programs, like those listed below, and those are based on the waste management hierarchy. Comprehensive plans have to be updated every five years, just like permit renewals, and they must describe the extent to which solid waste is or can be recycled within that service area, the expected environmental impact of the programs provided by, in that area, the specific, a specific plan and schedule for implementing those programs, and specific details of local recycling programs to meet the state volume reduction goals, and that separate at least glass, paper, plastic, and metal. So that's kind of the fundamentals of state law, and the local governments in our area decided that it was better to approach that jointly, and in 1990, they formed our commission. We're a 2080 intergovernmental agency. We now have twelve member cities, now that Mount Union has ceased to be a city, we used to have thirteen, and then Des Moines County as well. We are funded not by taxes, but by fees, the tipping fees at the landfill, for instance, and the per household fees, which are assessed to each member government based on the most recent household count in their service area, and those cover all of the programs that are not directly related with operating a landfill, such as recycling collection and processing, public education, business outreach, household hazardous waste management, those sorts of things. Our population is about fifty-five thousand, City of Burlington is roughly forty-six percent of that, and our waste stream, which includes household and commercial and industrial non-hazardous waste, is fifty-five thousand tons a year, it fluctuates a little bit. What do we do? Well, we manage MSW, or municipal solid waste, and the definition of that includes household waste, demolition and construction waste, and the non-hazardous commercial industrial waste. We also manage all of the residential recyclables generated in our area, and many of the commercial recyclables as well that are brought to us. We own and operate two facilities, the DMC Regional Landfill, which includes the Haskim Center of Southeast Iowa, and Area Recyclers, which is our hub for recycling activities, including curbside collection, the processing and marketing of those recyclables, and from our drop-off locations throughout Des Moines County, and from businesses that either direct haul recyclables to us or contract with a hauler to bring recyclables to us. And then we process and market those materials, and we have a gift store featuring items made from recycled or reused items. Let's talk about recycling specifically, that's a big part, big interest in our program, and any recycling system includes three main segments, the collection, how are you gonna gather the material, how are you gonna process it, and how are you gonna market it after you've recovered it? And let's look at each of these components, but taking into account the scale of the program, how that affects what choices you make, the convenience to the customer, the engagement with the customer, and also think about capital expenses, labor expenses, and physical obstacles to the different methodologies. The simplest form of collection is a drop-off, and we have eight of those throughout Des Moines County and one out at Area Recyclers. As you can see, it doesn't require a lot of equipment, doesn't require a lot of labor, there's nobody standing there to interact with customers. That also means you have very little engagement with the people that use it. You don't even have to live in our area to use those. People that work here or travel through are welcome to use the drop-offs, and if they throw the wrong materials in there, we have very little opportunity to communicate with them and, and try and set them straight on that at a drop-off system. The convenience factor on those is that they're available 24/7, you don't have to wait for your collection day. Moving up the scale to a more complicated collection network is a curbside sort program like we use in the twelve cities that we serve. We sort the materials at curbside, it is convenient in that we come to your curb, but you have to wait for your collection day, which is every other week. So it depends on how you wanna look at convenience. In terms of engagement, it gives us the maximum ability to communicate with the individual participants. If somebody's putting the wrong material in their bin, we will leave it with a note explaining how they should recycle. If we see them out there, we'll talk with them and, and educate them about the proper way to use the program. And of all the collection systems, that one gives you the most direct contact with the public to do that. In terms of expense, it requires more equipment than drop-off recycling, it requires more labor than the other collection methods. But you can do it just about anywhere. Now, some areas in the state, most notably the urbanized areas, and most recently the Quad Cities, have implemented single-stream recycling, and there's been a lot of excitement about that in those areas. We're in the same media area, so you've probably heard about it as well. Single-stream does not require the customer to separate recyclables from recyclables, they put them all in one big bin, and they're collected by an automatic collection truck, which reduces labor costs, it's a little bit higher on equipment costs, but you can get more households on a route that way. So as your housing density builds up, that becomes a much more practical way to collect recyclables. Talk about the processing in a minute. Our recycling center is what I would call a low-tech material recovery facility. As you see here, let's see if I can get the laser working, we have one sorting line for plastics, everything else that comes in is already pre-sorted. We pull out any junk that's in there, and we bail it, or we load it loose, and it's out of there. Not a lot of machinery involved, and fairly minimal labor involved in running our facility as compared to a high-tech MRF. And if you visited the new one at Des Moines, or, or at Davenport, it's beautiful, this isn't it, but it looks very much like this. The material comes in mixed together, it requires lots of sorting lines, lots of conveyors, lots of robotic equipment, and even lots of labor to handpick and, and process that material. It also requires a lot more, not just to construct and operate a facility like this, but to maintain all of those gadgets and, and robots and machinery that's there. I would be remiss if I didn't include one other collection technique that has been attempted in a couple of cities in North America, and that is, don't separate anything, just put it all in the garbage truck, you only have to run one truck around town, and then you take it to a building where you dump it out, and somebody has to sort through it.
Man, that's a fun job.
I have been to some facilities, they aren't quite as bad as this one, but you get the general idea that they are pretty nasty places to work, and you end up with a resulting material, or a line of materials, that has quite a bit of contamination in it.
Oh, my God.
Now, a drop-off container can go to any of these kind of facilities to be processed, but you would logically go to the least expensive, which is the low-tech MRF. Curbside collection, the same way, it's already pre-sorted, we don't need to do a lot of processing. Single-stream has to go to a high-tech MRF, because it's all mixed together. So, as you get that bigger population base, the more houses on a route, you save money on collection, but you spend more on processing. You also have more households to spread that cost over. So that's why it makes sense in places like Des Moines or Quad Cities. And as you can imagine, material that was never mixed together to start with is cleaner, you're gonna, it's gonna be more valuable in the marketplace than the material that has been mixed. I'm gonna speed through these next couple, but our pl- I'm gonna speed through these next couple, but our planning area includes a lot of these different kinds of terrains. This is actually in Des Moines County. Much of our service area looks like this, and you can see the houses are pretty far apart. If we were to try and run curbside collection in those areas, it would be very expensive per house to provide that level of convenience. We have a lot of small towns. This is Minneapolis, and curbside collection does make sense in a place like this, but it would be difficult to justify automated collection with all the expense on the processing end of things. If we were west Des Moines, on the other hand, curbside sort would get out of hand in a hurry. You really need to get the more, more houses on the, on the route and so forth. So where do we stand? We have a well-respected comprehensive program, waste reduction program and plan. We have a well-designed and operated landfill. When I started 21 years ago, we estimated our lifespan, design life, remaining at about 60 to 65 years. We've been able to stretch that 20 years later to 84 years due to increases or improvements in design technology, in compaction, and in success from our recycling programs. Our recycling and diversion programs have hovered between 40 and 45% since the late 90s. That's among the best in the state, and we have a Haskim Center that works quite well for, for free for our residents and for, at cost for small generators in the commercial sector. In terms of numbers, we process about 200,000 pounds per month of paper. It comes in mixed like this at curbside, and that's how it goes out. We load it loose onto trucks. We can meet the weight limits in the trucks that way. It goes to Indiana where it's turned into chinet plates and drink trays. Very little processing.
It's turned into what?
The chinet plates and drink trays, like you get it.
That's great to know. That's awesome.
Mixed glass. We process our own mixed glass out at the landfill. We pulverize it into a 3/8 minus aggregate that we mix with sand and use as a drainage medium when we're building new cells at the landfill. We also sell it as a sparkly designer landscape mulch in place of pea gravel. Metal cans. Being a deposit state, we don't see very many aluminum cans in there, so it doesn't pay for itself to, it would be simple enough to separate ferrous from non-ferrous cans, but because there's so few aluminum ones in there, it doesn't make sense to even do that much processing. We bring them in like this, and we bail them, about 30,000 pounds a month.
30,000 pounds a month?
Yes.
That's crazy.
Corrugated cardboard. We get this from curbside and drop-offs, but we also get it from a lot of our retail merchants in town, and it's the most valuable fiber in the, in the recycling stream, and we bail that at about 200,000 pounds per month. Plastics. We have always collected number one and number two plastics because those make up over 90% of the plastic stream in our town, in our, our area or any other area. That's about 90, a little over 90% of the plastics by weight. We added number five plastics a few years ago because it was an increasing proportion of the plastic stream. Now, we granulate our plastics. We get a higher dollar value for it. You can only get away with that if you have an established reputation for low contamination levels in there, and we've been able to establish that and maintain it. We produce 100,000 pounds every quarter of the number one and two plastics, but even though number five plastic is our third most common plastic, it takes us nearly a year to accumulate a truckload. So when you think about recycling all the plastic numbers, three, four, six, and seven together would be less than that five, that number five number there. Think how much storage space you'd have to have if you were trying to recycle that in a population the size that we serve.
Okay, that answers my question, but the other, next question I would have is, what happens if the plastic comes in not clean?
Well, we, we sort the plastics, and we do ask that they be reasonably rinsed. They don't have to be washed or run through the dishwasher, and we have to remove the caps. We would prefer people left the caps off entirely because they're usually a different kind of plastic.
Right.
And we're having to remove those on the line. If they're really filthy, we will, they'll put them in the reject pile.
Reject.
Yeah, but, but typically, we're sorting by type of plastic, those numbers, and by colored or uncolored, because they have different commodity values. As you can see here, we have soap jugs, detergent bottles in that first one, milk jugs in the second, green soda bottle type bottles, clear soda type bottles, and I can't tell what the farthest one is. But that's how we market it, and we can get a lot more weight in a load by granulating than by bailing. When you bail plastics, you're gonna send them to somebody who's gonna have to do further processing and separate them by type, so it's lower market value. Now, what are the benefits of being a member of our commission in particular? Well, we have the established permitted landfill that was requirement number one in state law. We have an established MRF or recycling center, and the good thing about having our own is that when the markets go on a protracted skid, as they have been known to do, private ones, or ones that you don't control, can shut down and stop taking recyclables, or they can reduce certain materials that they decide are no longer economically viable. That really messes up your participants if they're used to recycling certain things and it's on again, off again. We've been able to avoid that by running our own and, and keeping it operating continuously. We provide curbside recycling collection in each of those 12 cities, household hazardous waste facility that's free to residents. We provide the community cleanup credits that Burlington has been very adept at using over the last several years, not just for spring and fall cleanup, but for derelict building cleanup, riverfront cleanups, those sorts of things, special projects. Burlington has three seats on our commission board. Each of our member governments has the ability to appoint one representative to that board. Burlington gets more because you're bigger. And we've proven to be a secure long-term investment. Now, what happens when a member leaves? And we kind of got into this a little bit with Mount Union, although that's not a normal process. They cease to exist, so we had to telescope it, but we actually have a section of our bylaws that describes the process. If a member city or the county were to express a desire to withdraw today, the effective date, according to our policy, would be July 1st of their request to withdraw. From that point, it's a three-year process to get out, and that's because we're planning long-term in our budgets. We're making investments and, and, you know, planning infrastructure on a, much longer than a three-year basis, but that gives us some ability to kind of ease through it. So during that three-year period, that member is still obligated to send their waste to us, as they have been up to that point, and to receive all of the services that we currently provide, which is the recycling, the household hazardous waste, and all of those things. That stays as it goes forward. At the end of that three years, they have to pay off the remainder of their prorata share of commission debt. As I mentioned, Burlington, as an example, is 46% of our population base. Based on the experience we went through with Mount Union, the way we would look at the remaining debt at this point, we have some bonds out there. You remember 2006 to 2010, when they changed the landfill rules on us? Hit us pretty hard, and we had to go into debt. We borrowed a lot of money from the county. We will be paying that back in full this June, so that will be done. Then we have the state revolving fund loans. We still have about 4 and 1/4 million in principal and interest to pay off on that after the end of this fiscal year. We've just been paying interest up till now. So that would be remaining debt as of this July. It's, have to be readjusted annually through that three-year period. Closure-post closure obligation. By federal and state law, every landfill has to have closure-post closure financial assurance set aside, and in Iowa, it has to be in cash form ultimately, but you can buy in incrementally over the design life of your landfill. That means we now have 84 more years to finish paying into that in the normal score of things. We have some put aside already. The rest of it, we cover annually through a local government guarantee, which is a formula of, of debt-to-asset ratio, and by purchasing a, help me out, what is it? A line of credit, irrevocable line of credit, basically. And so every year, the state requires us to hire a third-party engineer to re-estimate what it would cost if the landfill closed that year. And rules can change, that, the definition of closure-post closure can change from year to year, so those are adjusted. It's not just a matter of how much have you paid in, it's a matter of, okay, what's the estimate that year? So that would have to be calculated on a running basis as well. Right now, based on this year's closure-post closure assessment, we would owe in a neighborhood of 3 and 1/3 million to go. So a withdrawing member would have to pay their share of all of that at the point where they sever ties with the commission, and they would have to cover all of the attorney's fees and any administrative fees that might result from that. If we have a significant change to our comprehensive plan, then we have to file an amended comprehensive plan before the next due date of the regular comprehensive plan. Our next one is due in about a year, so, or a year and a half from now. So that's that five-year cycle. Anyway, that's what we've come up with so far, and the member that leaving would have to forfeit its share of capital investment in property and equipment to date and of what we've paid into post closure, closure-post closure funds. And they would, regardless of whether they leave or not, nobody gets out of long-term liability under EPA rules. If anything happens at any point in the future, anybody that's used that landfill can be held for reckoning for their proportionate share of that. And that's not where the fund ends. If somebody withdraws, then they still have to provide these same programs. They would have to designate a landfill that they're gonna take their waste to or establish their own and get it permitted, and I can tell you, in the 21 years I've been here, there have been no new permits for landfills in Iowa.
Not one?
Not one. Not that I'm aware of. There have been expansions, but there have not been any new ones. In Iowa, if that landfill is in Iowa, then the, the city or county that's leaving would have to join the comp plan that goes with that landfill, and that probably would involve buying into assets that that commission has. It would also involve showing that they are providing all the programs that are detailed in that comp plan. If they chose a landfill that's out of state, then they would probably have to build, permit, and operate a transfer station, and they would have to file their own comprehensive plan, which includes that description and schedule of landfill diversion programs. So those are all the things that the commission already provides to its members. That would have to be covered in addition to all of the buyout procedure on that. Kind of ties it back to the, the state law. So be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Hal, you're a rock star. We're blessed to have you. Let me say that first and foremost.
I don't have any questions.
I just want to say for the record, somehow, people think that I'm against recycling. I'm not against recycling. I was just looking at some stuff, but good information, and we do appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Well, appreciate you all as well.
It's a complicated system. DNR has made that more and more so as time has gone on.
Yes.
You had some significant changes that hit in the 90s. You had some significant ones that hit in the mid 2000s.
2006, '07, and those hit us particularly disproportionately harshly compared to the rest of the state, and that just was the luck of the geometry of our landfill and where the expansion area was relative to the old landfill at that point in time.
I think that was about the time that I was on that commission, and it was like, "Grr, what are we doing here?"
It was not pretty, and I don't think it was well-thought-through, and I think now they're actually backing off to a position more consistent to what I was advocating at the time, but we've spent a lot of money in the meantime to get there. We are, the good news is that as we go through our annual budget process, and we adopt ours in May, we are getting to the stage where we can envision being on a cash flow basis again in the future. So we're, we're getting to where the end of the balance sheet looks black instead of red.
That's good.
So that's a very good thing, and we hope to continue moving in that direction.
I was gonna say, we're trying to follow.
So any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hal Morton. Thanks for taking, taking the time and coming down. I will keep right on rolling along. Pool Dome, Mr. Freeland.
And this is Otto Losley. What we've been doing is trying to put together some money, and we've done, had some fundraising efforts that are working pretty well, and part of that is we're applying for a CAT grant through Vision Iowa, and, so we're intending to put an application in in September for that grant, and part of what they require is the city to show some support for the project and the county, and we're still talking about half a million dollars overall, and the number that gets thrown out is what would be helpful to get that grant is $100,000 level of support from the city, and that does not have to happen all in one year like we were talking about originally. That could be spread out over five years, but with, talking with Eric, it sounds like what they would like to see is a resolution saying that the city is willing to provide $100,000 worth of support over the next five years, and I guess, we don't know exactly how the details of that works, but there's already money budgeted towards that pool over the next five years, but I guess it's probably Jim, question for Jim as to how this works from here, but that's, that's what we're here to ask for, I guess.
The previous time that you were here, I don't remember the city being asked to contribute anything towards the project.
That's correct, yes. Now we are.
Yeah, that, I was gonna say, I didn't remember that.
Surprise.
And the grant, the grant would cover 20% of the cost.
The grant, the grant will cover 18 to 20% of the cost of the project as well.
But to get the grant, we have to show city support, county support.
As, as you look at having this in place, Eric, there is some discussion about a need to take down lighting and take down fencing each season?
Well, the lighting possibly, but not fencing. The fencing would be reconfigured to match up with the, with the structure.
It's just in general, was some of the discussion about, you've gotten a plan together, kind of a, a plan for the pool dome and how that would impact, I guess, whether the city cost or operational cost, what those were, and then kind of long-term operational costs as well, just some general questions on that.
And the pro forma that you had presented with the numbers of folks, the, the teams coming over and lessons and stuff, how, how does that compare with the amount that's over at the Y now?
There's, there were 90 kids on the swim team this year at the Y, all local kids. We just started a, a USA session from April to July, and there's 50 kids in that, or half of those from out of town?
Yeah, right now, the, the ones that are from out of town are roughly around half right now, actually are coming from Fort Madison, Central Lee, Mount Pleasant, Minneapolis, Danville, several acute towns in Illinois, Biggsville, Oquaca, and there's another town I can't remember at the moment, but, so there has been a lot of interest. We also, I mean, even today, I just took two more calls today of families that are interested and wanted, and are planning to sign up. So as this grows, I mean, we are getting more and more interest. I'm also hearing from several community members that have stopped me. I got a phone call a few weeks ago of an organization that wants to apply for a community grant for us that would go towards, towards the bubble as well. We would know in July whether we would receive that or not.
So out of the folks that are using the Y now with your program, about how many of them would be moving over?
Well, what we have proposed always with the Y is we want to work together on this program. Multiple, there's, actually, we just came back from state and regionals, and Walnut Creek out of Des Moines is a Y program, but they also are a USA program, and that's what we have always, they're not formally, but they work together, and that's what we have always said with the Y, and that's what we want to see right now from our Y team. I think we're just over 20 kids right now that are doing the USA program. That still leaves, out of the 90 that we had in the season, that still leaves 70 kids, which is where we normally were.
And I would guess most of those 20 would still swim wide during the Y season.
Yeah, and exactly, and, and that's where, that's what we have always said with the Y. And this is, we want this to be a joint effort. It's never been a competing program. I mean, it's, we're.
Probably shared coaching as well.
Are you, so you're looking at having this come forward with support from the Y then?
Yeah, we've talked to Andy at, at length, and so, yeah.
We've been in constant communication.
I guess we could get, we would talk to them, but if it needs something a little more formal, we could, we could work towards that.
Yeah, just a concern there to make sure that we're not damaging their program as part of it.
No, no. And we have been in constant communication with them as far as what we're doing and wanting to work together, and, you know, we have to work together, so, I mean, because both, for both programs to survive. I mean, really, and again, the USA program is a higher-level competition. Not every kid wants that. Not every swimmer wants that, and it's, certain kids want a Y program, certain kids want a USA program. They, we can, they can swim in both, or they can do one or the other, and there's definitely room for both, and like, we're. And like we're seeing with this USA program right now, almost half of them, or right around half, I don't have the exact numbers, are not even, are from their surrounding communities. So, and I think we're going to be getting more from Illinois and Fort Madison and the surround, you know, other surrounding towns.
Have you raised some money?
Yes.
Yes, we have. I forgot to ask if we could publicly announce the donations we've gotten. So, I don't want to say right now, but we received a very.
We're moving right along.
We've gotten a very generous.
We feel good about that.
Contribution from an entity here in town, but I really don't want to disclose it unless I, because I forgot that.
I was wrong with the question at this time.
Having been on that Vision Iowa board, I know that it's very, very particular about showing community support, and you're not going to get very far if you're not.
We're working with Tracy Lamb at Southeast Regional Planning. She said, yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of a game stopper to not have.
And, you know, we're hoping to, I have also heard from some, another community organization that may be interested in helping out too. So, you know, we're hoping that with the grant, you know, if we are showing potentially right now, and this is without even branching out too much, for asking for money, those three, if those three organizations come through, you know, with different, with the funding, you know, that's community support in itself too. But, you know, this grant would definitely be a huge, if we can, 20% of it, it would be huge.
Yep, for sure.
What else would you need from us to kind of move forward, or I guess that's.
I guess one of the biggest concerns that, from a staff perspective, $100,000 match, we've got a CIP program that is booked out for five years and still doesn't meet, I mean, this would be coming out and competing with the REC programs, stuff that Eric is doing, and where you'd fit that in, and what that would mean you'd have to bump.
I guess part of our discussion was whether some of those items that are already in the CIP, if those can be used for match or if it has to go directly to the dome. If we're doing deck improvements or other improvements, can that be used as the match? Or does it have to go specifically?
Some of the deck improvements would really probably need to be done as part of the project that we're talking about, so that wouldn't need to be done by the city. And then there's some, there's some other things that are in the budget that just need to be done anyway, so, yeah, there's some of that that we kind of need to go through with a little more detail to work out as far as those things go, but.
But, I mean, as long as you can figure out how to make that match work, if you're coordinating with projects that you're already doing, that's helpful. Still have a concern to make sure that we're not taking on a higher operating cost long-term. That's, I mean, we just can't afford a higher operating cost. And, making sure that you have, that we're not going to harm an existing program in the process of doing this at the Y. Because somehow, there has to be some level of cooperation to make sure that.
Would it be helpful if we got a letter from either the board or from Andy saying?
I think that would. And then I don't know what, how we'd get some level of assurance on operating costs long-term.
The budget we've been working for, for ongoing costs, is budget neutral as far as the city is concerned, right? But, at the same time, you know, we're dealing with some unknowns as to level of enrollment and things like that. So, I mean, you know, to say that we got all the answers five years from now is just probably not fair to say, but we feel pretty good about the projections based on other programs in other towns and from the people who have been helping put the program together, so.
Did you, when we were talking the other day, we were talking about what effect the long-term impact on the pool itself would be?
I think that's something, just some sort of draft agreement to start to get these down of what are the responsibilities and costs and who's managing it. I think that might be a good step to make sure we're both clear on both ends of, are you taking it for nine months, are you looking at 12 months? What's our staff involvement? What's the long-term costs? And I think that, we've talked about that, but start to get something down where we can work off of and really identify who's responsible for what.
And I think you'd almost have to have a buyout in there, or a spot, that stops the program if the city's costs are escalating as a result. The problem I see with that, though, is if you go after the Vision Iowa funding, you're committed to that for 15 years. So, if, you're going to be in a position where, if you do that, you have, if they're not able to cash flow it, somebody's got to come up and keep that program running. That's a bigger risk than what was being asked for before. And somehow, that has to be figured out, what, how you're handling that.
Right, because then you have to repay. That grant has to be repaid if you don't meet the requirements. The very first meeting I went to on that Vision Iowa board, some community did not meet the requirements, so they were on notice to repay, so that was, I mean, that's an eye-opener.
Yeah, so you're taking on and off a lot more. And, things change, we understand, but you've, the last time you were here, you were saying no cash from the city, and now you're saying $100,000 to make a match on a grant. And we understand circumstances change, but you also have to know that if you have a change in one spot, you could also have that kind of similar type thing happen on the operating cost. Even under well-intentioned circumstances, things won't always go as you're hoping, but...
Basically, you don't have to apply for that grant.
Correct.
We thought that it would help, you know, with the funding, but, you know, we realized it also was a strain on the city, so.
Yeah, for us, that's, $100,000 is significant?
It is.
The $100,000 doesn't necessarily have to be that significant, depending on what he can roll into that project. The other part, though, is if you have a responsibility to carry on a project, what you're, that's another level of commitment that's there.
Long-term.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get more answers as we move forward.
Our end, would it be appropriate to start some, at least some terms of lease agreements that we both have a full understanding of what's, who's responsible for what, at least to get that in place, probably before you apply for a grant?
What is your timeline on that?
We were going to apply in September. That was the intent.
Oh, we've got a ways to go.
So, is it, should we work with Eric?
You should. Counsel, do you want to continue to work forward on this? I mean, you're seeing, there's different risks than what we're talking about when this was brought forward the last time.
I'm still open to hear more. I'll tell you about that $100,000, you just gut punched me, man. I'm still open to listen and see what you guys put together. Are you guys open to at least see what options are available to us on this?
Whatever we come up with, it needs to be ironclad, and that I don't want to see us put in the same position we were put in with the last CAC grant that we did, that had to fund $700,000 of it that was unexpected.
What was that for?
I want the B's remodel. I want something ironclad that we're not going to put our taxpayers at risk on another project. So, yeah, work with the staff and what you have, come back to us.
You've got permission, I think, and you can tell me if I'm wrong on this, to move forward, to continue to work with plans, but you don't have a commitment from the council.
Correct.
They're willing to consider something, but there's a lot of, lot of things, details that need to be worked out to make sure that they're able to be comfortable with all the long-term implications.
From what we looked at, as far as items that were already budgeted, a fair amount of that, without, I mean, we just kind of glanced at it, were items that would be included in the overall project that we're proposing. So, I think a fair amount of that money is already allocated to things that will be done by us, or that's our assumption anyway. And I guess the other way to look at the $100,000 is you're getting a half million dollar asset for $100,000. So, I mean, that'd be another way to look at that.
It's also got to be an asset that you know how to use and.
Yeah, and manage, and, yeah.
Okay, it's good.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
I hope we can make it go.
Thank you.
Okay, number three, council's procedure for citizen participation.
Okay. This is basically a follow-up from what you had on the last meeting on this. We put in your packet, you have a one-page document that's essentially out of the, I think, the cert city of Urbandales? Is that what I said last time?
No, it was.
Mason City, I think.
Not Mason City.
No, no. Hiawatha.
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 Out of their policy, they have a 20-some-page manual of rules, procedure for council meetings, for code of ethics, for board, different citizen boards. But this is the policy they have in, specifically in regards to communications from the public at council meetings. It's here essentially for you to take a look at and consider the pros and cons, and whether you want to move forward with something like this. Again, what we're trying to address is ensuring that we have a fair process for how do you make sure that you maintain decorum in a way that isn't haphazard, but has a consistent policy that you can follow and is clear, and can be defined to members of the public.
Yeah, I do want to say this because I, somebody was reading a paper, I guess it was the hot guy that said that he was berated and brow-beaten down here at City Hall. I didn't take it that way. I mean, he was definitely saying falsehoods, you know, when this all went down, but I just took it that somebody was confused, but they were upset and needed to get something off their chest. Here's the way I look at it, and this is nothing against anybody else. If it was me taking the brow-beating, I'll take it. I'm not for, I'm not for silencing anybody. If they get out of line and they say bad words or something like that and get to cussing, or it turns into ad hominem, I think that should be shut down right away. But it's, again, on that situation, it's, you know, you say, well, it should have been shut down right up the bat, but it's hard to, you can't come down with a complaint and say, well, I've got a complaint against this department without saying that you've got a complaint against this department. I mean.
I think that's true, but I also think that there are many ways, and I've actually been on both sides of the fence and been able to express my concern and my problem in a very respectful manner. And, in the past, I have been very disrespectful, and I have learned that the best way to communicate that you have a problem and an issue and you want it addressed is to do it with respect, because that's the only way you're going to be heard. Because when someone starts to get irate and pointing and raising their voice, it's, a lot of people just shut down. They stop listening. Because if you're going to be rude, even though you feel you have been attacked by the city in some way, it's just, there's just only one good way for people to communicate, and that's in a calm manner with respect. And that's extremely difficult when you're angry or when you have high emotion, but that's a part of being an adult.
You also, I just want to, we need to be mindful of the climate as well, and I don't want to, I don't know how to say this with, I won't say that. There's no way that that's going to come out right.
Good for you.
You know, my personal feeling is that I, in regards to the time limit for people speaking at the end of the meetings, I'm talking about only, I'm only talking about the public comment at the end of the meetings. I'm not talking about public hearings or any of that.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about that time where we say, we have any comments from the audience. I've never really ever been in favor of limiting. But now that we come to this situation where our attorney says we can't answer, we can't respond, then that changes the picture for me. To me, a reasonable time limit, and people can state what they want to say, and that takes care of it, and so they don't just go on and on and on for the purpose of going on. And then you, so, yeah, you're charged with responsibility for maybe telling people you've had enough time, but if we have a specific time limit, then that takes the pressure off of any of us to say, hey, you've gone too far, you're out of line. You're three minutes, or whatever number you want to pick is up. That's it. That's the only reason I even want to consider a timeline, is because that has changed.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And, you know, if they do have something that they want to say, and it's going to be lengthy, you know, write us all a letter, send us an email, write a letter to the editor. I mean, I read those, so.
I understand that part too, but sometime, I mean, if you write a letter to the editor and that, and you still see no resolve, if you, all I'm trying to do is look at it as, if I felt like nobody was listening to me, this is my last stop here. You know what I'm saying? I mean, to come before the council and to say, hey, I'm upset, and I just, yeah, I know it's not pretty, and sometimes it's making sausage, I understand that, but that's where I am.
So, you would not be in favor of, during like the end of the, end of the meeting, public comment with some sort of like time limit, just because we can't engage and, you know, express our concerns or our solutions to their problem without breaking the law?
I, for one, I'm having a lot of difficulty with not being, with believing that we can't engage the citizens when they come up to talk to us, to ask us a question at the end of the meeting. I can't figure it out, it's, I've been sitting up here for 20 years, and it's not been an issue. I think it's somebody's way of silencing the council as well as silencing the citizen. Our job as directors for the public is to listen to what they have to say, and then try to get out of them what they're saying, and then try to come up with a solution. We're not taking a vote, we're not making a decision. If someone says, how do I, how do I get my neighbor to clean up his yard? It's as simple as saying, talk to that man over there. I mean, but we can't, the impression I'm getting is we can't even communicate. You've got to sit here tight-lipped and not say a darn thing. And I know, standing out there, standing at that podium, I have the same, I know the feeling. My daughter is handicapped. She's in a wheelchair. She can't walk. They parked a van in front of a ramp at the school. It was a fun fest or an open house at school, and my daughter wanted to attend with her three kids. She couldn't get up on the sidewalk. The man that had blocked, it was a private business, had blocked the ramp, said, let me pull you up over the curb. My daughter's greatest fear is falling. She didn't want that. She said, no, I don't, I don't want that. When I went to get answers from the school principal, from, and from the, ultimately from the, the, the school board, they told me they couldn't answer. Said it's got to be on the agenda, so I put it on the agenda, and when I got there to talk to them about it, they had their attorney talking for them over the telephone. Took them completely, took my representatives completely out of the picture. I know they wanted to say something. They were outraged. I know they wanted to say something. They knew it was wrong, and they couldn't say it was wrong. I want to be able to sit here, if somebody's got a problem, tell them it's wrong. I want to be able to talk to somebody and say, how can we solve your problem? That's what I want to be able to do up here. If I can't do that anymore, I don't want to be a part of this. I'm here because I want to help people, I want to work with people, I want to see Berlin to be the best place it could be. I want to see, I want it to live what you've got on your wrist. Live, work, and play. And I can only do that when I can talk to people, and when we can work things out. If it's, if I'm going to be silenced by an attorney saying, I've got a fear of being sued, I don't want to be, I don't want to be a part of it anymore. So, if the council's going to say, we're going to limit what people can say, I don't want anybody sitting, I don't want anybody coming to the podium and doing what that citizen done, and insulting employees, and attacking employees, and shaking their finger at employees, I want the mayor to control that. But any other citizens that come up that don't necessarily have complaints, that want to talk to the council, want to express their concerns, and want a response from the council, I think we should be doing that. If we're not, there's no point in us being up here. That's the most important part. This stuff, this stuff we take votes on and the money that we spend and all that kind of stuff, that's not the important part, that's the end part. The important part is talking to these people out here and doing for them what they want. That's my position on this. I've got, I'm having a real hard time accepting any of this. I would like to know what Kathleen Richardson's opinion is on this. She's been told, I've been told she's the far, the most respected and most knowledgeable on this sort of thing. You can go to 50 attorneys and get 50 different responses.
I can tell you. I can tell you, I can tell you, one of these legal city meetings that I went to, one of the first years I was on the council, Kathleen Richardson was the presenter. And she told us, sitting, we were, all of us sitting there, and I asked her the question, just exactly what you were saying. She said, no, you cannot respond. If someone comes up because, and talks to you at that public comment period, it's not on the agenda, you are not to respond. That was her position. So that's what I came back here and I told everybody on the council, and we started doing that, and then the Hawkeye or whomever out there wrote an editorial, and, and then they contacted her, and she backtracked and said, well, you need to contact your attorney. So what are you going to do?
That's, that's what I'm saying. She backtracked, and it was my impression that she, in that article, she was saying that, no, that wasn't the, that that wasn't the case. But she should contact your attorney.
That's not what she told us in that meeting.
Right, I understand that. But nonetheless, it's still, it's, 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 it's still a way of the, of the, tell wagon the dog.
And it, and it was, at the time, one of my good friends was on the school board, and he had to sit there just exactly like you said, and I said, that is just seems so ridiculous, that you can't respond to the, to the, to the public, but now we're getting this, that's right, we can't.
For me, it's worked, it's worked for 20 years sitting here.
It's not right.
I don't know why it can't continue to work.
Are you, do we have a consensus on wanting to move forward on, on making some adjustments on that?
Well, I don't think there's any harm in having decorum rules, I, I really don't see anything wrong with that, but.
That's pretty standard, I think.
I just don't know, I just don't know about the, the time limit on speaking at the, at the, at the end of the meetings. And like I say, the only reason I would support that is if we have to follow this guideline that we can't respond. Now, as far as someone comes up and says, hey, I have this problem with nuisance, you can turn and say, yeah, can you look at that? We should be able to do that.
I'd say, aren't there cases too where we can turn to the city manager?
Yep, he's, the attorney said that the other day, said, yeah, you're fine with that, yeah.
The other thing, I think, I sure don't disagree with what you're saying. It is true though, when the public comes forward on an agenda item, we certainly can communicate back and forth, right?
Correct.
No problem there. It's if something off the agenda after the meeting, right? Yeah.
Something that's important to them.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. Well, it's important to us if it's important to them, you're right.
But when, when you're standing out there, it doesn't look like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're not.
Especially when somebody's talking, you're just sitting there looking at them.
Especially when you hear that more and more and more all the time, they just don't listen, they don't listen, they don't listen.
Yeah, I understand, okay. So he's going to ask, well, what do you want to do?
Would you be willing to see this come forward as a resolution to accept this without item C on there, the rest of it? C is the time limit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Does it give? Does it give the citizen an opportunity to, how would somebody know to ask for something to be put on the agenda? Is it in, I guess I want that to be more, it's more public, like for, you know, I don't know, how to make more people aware, so if they have a topic that they really have a lot to say and want some answers and some back and forth discussion, I want them to know how they can have it put on the agenda.
So, so are you saying having some, some wording that says, if it's going to, now then I could, I could deal with it. If we're saying that, if you have something that you want to say that's going to take over a certain amount of time to get done, then we would, then we would prefer to.
I don't know that you need that on this particular document, though.
No.
No, but I, I would, I, I guess that's kind of a side thing.
Okay, all right, so I guess we are.
And whatever county it is that we've got this from has, I think, has a whole procedure for how agenda's set and everything else. I mean, it has the full council rules procedure, but that's kind of, it is a separate issue, but it's, it's related.
Yeah.
So moving.
This, this policy itself, what we're talking about in terms of community, rules of decorum, outside of the time limit, the rest of it, is it acceptable for what you're, what we're asking, or what we're putting up for rules of behavior?
It looks all right to me.
Yeah, it's acceptable to me.
And the recommendation was to have that in the form of a resolution, formally approved, something that we could make sure that we get posted appropriately. But if that's okay, we can have it come back this next Monday on the regular agenda.
Okay.
That's fine, sounds good to me. You guys good? You good too?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good deal. And next we have an assessment issue, number four.
This is following up on a couple of the previous discussion from last meeting in regards to the request for assessment to be altered in some format. The recommendation that you, from the attorney, as he talked with bond counsel about what's appropriate, what makes sense, if you were to have a willingness to do something in regards to the assessment as it's been structured, his recommendation would be to work within the parameters of what's set by state statute, which has to do with the length of time and the interest rate specifically.
Right.
Currently, the assessment is set with a nine percent interest rate. It doesn't have to be that high. You could, I assume theoretically you could go down to zero. The length of time, our standard policy is 10 years. State statute allows you to extend that out over 15 years. The issue in regards to ag deferment, we don't control that. Anything in regards to an ag deferment is specifically, unfortunately, in this circumstance, an issue that needs to be dealt with, with the county assessor and, and how he's interpreting. And he, and he's required to make sure that he's interpreting it correctly by state statute too. But the flexibility that you have, regardless, if you're interested in trying to do something different than what was done back in 2006 or 2004, I'm sorry, would be around those parameters.
Boy, I'd have no problem going along with down to one percent interest and going to 15 years. I mean, that at least is a positive in the right direction, it doesn't solve the whole problem.
Do you know if the assessor's board had talked about this at all, in relation to?
I, I, no, we haven't talked about it. At a board meeting, I had, I called the assessor's office, but I haven't had a chance to get, or Matt Warner was out of town, he never did get back with me.
I guess, the only thing I can say is repeat what I said before. By virtue of where they lived in the place and time, they've been treated like no other citizens been treated. Being forced to pay for two streets, that one that never, doesn't benefit them, probably never will. And, I, I, for me, I can't hold out personally for anything other than forgiveness of that debt. And maybe it's guilt that I feel on my part for not being wiser at the time, or seeing through it at the time, one way or the other.
I can't say that I, I don't know if I'm with the forgiveness, just because I know that somebody else that was affected by that already paid, but I, I didn't understand how come it wasn't an option, that wasn't presented as an option to, again, go back to the, to when the property is sold and, and collect back money off of the, you know, can we charge that to the property? Was, that was never an option on the.
This is, we, we have, state statute with assessments gives broad, gives some fairly defined language about what latitude you have, and that's kind of what his attorney was looking at, at what, where's, where is our latitude? What's, what is established by state statute? These are the types of flexibility that, that's, that is, is set out in the, in the What you're asking doesn't fall within our level of response or ability to do something. We could have chosen when, at the time, not to do an assessment, but when you do an assessment, there's a, a process for, for what, what you can do within the rules of it, for spreading out payments, how you, how you can structure, and we, we can't move beyond where state statute gives us that, that control.
Yeah, it seemed, I don't know, I mean, I don't know anything about that stuff, it just seems almost arbitrary how, how they picked what to, what to be able to do with that, but.
So the best we can do is zero interest and the balance is due in two years?
Not 15 years.
15 year pay repayment schedule.
So it's, we can set them up on a 15 year repayment schedule, and we can set the terms.
You start a new schedule effective immediately.
When it start, it goes into that repayment schedule when the ag deferment goes out, is my understanding how that works. I don't know, you've had any conversations?
It's way better than we were. It's way better than it was.
They've already been billed for the first installment, haven't they?
And it was, it seemed like what, what I saw from your, when you brought that in, was over a year ago, so it's been a while since I've seen that, but.
It's had two.
The, the first payment was one tenth of the principal plus the nine percent interest.
Look at the options that they gave.
So, how, we, that could be extended out again, instead of one tenth of the principal being due that first year to, to the 115th. Now, I think you might be, you're at the end of the first years, I don't know if we can, if that could be changed, and that would have to be worked out within, through attorneys about how that first year falls out with it when it's already this far through the year, but.
Well, definitely the interest rate has to be changed.
Oh, yeah.
For sure, that, that's just nine percent is.
Do we, do we have a thought on that? Do we have a thought on that? Somebody want to throw something?
Get on to one percent, get on to zero is fair, I don't care. I mean, that was, that's not a critical deal.
And that's where I am.
I think zero is the right number.
That's fine with me. And then go to 15 years instead of 10.
Okay. Are you, is everybody satisfied with that, or at least?
And I know this is not much of a condolence, but we were talking about how to respectfully address the council, and I, I believe that you did that so well, and I know it's an emotional topic and, and you're really struggling, but the way you presented it, the case and yourself, you're to be commended on that, and so I admire you for that.
Not easy.
Yeah, I know.
So we, are you good there?
And I don't know that that'll be back for this next Monday, but we'll at least get it to Patrick and see if he can have that ready or not.
Okay, that's good. Let's move right ahead, we've got, come on down, GQ.
Jesse Caston, Terrace Real Estate Group. So I want to talk to you a little bit about downtown parking. We have two buildings, which Eric's going to put on the screen here, that are currently under contract, downtown upper story development. These are proposed market rate units in these two buildings, the building's in right there. Churchill, where Mr. Motto's used to be, and then the blah building is where Hope Haven used to be, just for reference for everybody. So, the developer, and the, the developer's actually going to plan to come to a work session in a couple of weeks, so I'm not going to talk a lot about them, they're other quad cities. They've done a lot of historic tax credit projects. They are, like you said, I'll mention it again, it's market rate, so they use the historic federal and state tax credit, but these are market rate apartments that they do. A lot downtown, Davenport, I'm going to try to get there next week to go through some of their projects. Currently, they have in different stages, just starting all the way to finished. So, I mean, with, with this project, this is 100 to 125 units that they're looking at, so the biggest question or concern is parking for downtown. So, we've been looking at this for probably the last two to three months and, and trying to help solve the parking issue and, and, you know, who all can be involved and how do we solve that? So, I think there's a couple options that we put out there, but, but part of their question and, and actually part of the contractual agreement is to figure out parking. So whether that's a city-owned lot that they turn around and lease back part of that, or how that's worked out, some on-street angle parking. So I'm not sure, Eric, if you can show us some different options that maybe we have, but it's mainly, I wanted to get here and we started talking about this, because, you know, if, if we can't figure out parking, then this project doesn't happen.
I guess on this, this map, what they're showing is on Valley Street right there, there's a, and maybe you can talk about it, Jim, but go ahead and talk about that.
I actually asked Jesse to look at some different configurations, and actually going through these different, it might make sense to have Jesse walk through the maps, he's the one who put it together. Jesse, how?
This Jesse, not this Jesse.
Yeah, different Jesse.
Yeah.
So on Valley Street, as you see, the street's actually wide enough to accommodate two 12-foot lanes, and then diagonal 45-degree parking on the south side of the street, and if you did it that way, you'd be able to generate about 42 spaces there. The next one, there's been some thought in pursuing purchase of the property owned by BNSF, just again, south of Valley there, and what you'd do in that case, they, they wanted two different options, a 50-foot buffer and a 25-foot buffer. I believe this one is the 50-foot buffer, and if you went ahead and did that, you'd be able to generate 101 total spaces in the lot, in addition to, I think it was, well, that's the lot and the on-street parking. There's a few less spots on Valley there because of the 50-foot arc, kind of cuts into that, and here's the 25-foot buffer variety. Basically, you'd be able to squeeze in 147 spots with on-street and lot parking in that location if you went that route.
Something to throw in with that, if you want to put that back up, the other one, the, our parking lot north of there, we have hourly parking set up there that has gone over so wonderfully. There's a.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. There's about 24 spots in that lot that are available that we could also have as a discussion for using towards permanent parking, or on, on a monthly basis, parking arrangements too. So that's part of the discussion that we can throw in with, with that. And I think that's, you had one other slide, Eric?
Just Main Street Iowa had some designs as well for different options there, if the full lot's used or not.
Right, and, and they had an option for a dog park on the west side of the bridge. The, the reg, the rest of the parking there, I believe they had 120 or so in this configuration, but it didn't have any of that buffer into account. I think, do you have a concept with the buffers from Main Street Iowa?
Okay. Had a 50-foot setback.
So this was the 50-foot setback. It had, it had less parking, but I believe that was about 75, 80. But there's a couple of different ways we could, you know, go about solving the parking problem downtown. I think there was one more for.
This, this one didn't have the buffer, the previous one had the 25-foot buffer.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're looking, you can't count the spots on those, but there are several different variations of things that we've looked at. All of those, though, that deal with the BNSF's land, take into, or fail to take into account that we don't control BNSF's land. We've had some conversations with them through the chamber, trying to see if we can't work out. We've had some conversations with them through the chamber, trying to see if we can't work out a possible arrangement with them. We don't know where that will go. And I guess turn it back to you for.
Thanks, Jesse. Yeah, and just a couple of things on this project. So with these developers, with the project that's being looked at here, this will be a phased project. So they'll start in one building, then go to the next. The Blah and Suns Building, or the former, hopefully yours, would be, they've indicated that would probably be the first building that they did. So, you know, right away, they would be looking at maybe the sixty stalls, but then trying to figure out where the rest of the stalls are going to come from. And also, just in regards to, I mean, not only this project, but really development downtown, is that with all the, you know, local and outside developers that I brought and looked at downtown, the biggest concern is parking. And so, I mean, to be progressive on, you know, really revitalizing and going with the momentum that we have for downtown, it's an important thing to be talking about and looking at now. I think that this kind of put it at the forefront because it's going to be, like I mentioned in the beginning, as part of this, it's going to be required that they, that there's parking somewhere that they can either lease or purchase. So that's why we started these conversations a while back. Like I said, we've been working on this project for a couple of months, but it, these buildings are currently under contract. So they've taken the next step forward, but it's just trying to figure out the participation on the parking.
The simple thing to start with would be the angled parking along Valley. That would be the simplest, easiest thing for us to do, right?
Yeah, and talking with Jesse Howe, as he mentioned, the, to get that full extent would change. You'd be looking at doing a little bit of modifications with the quiet zone?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now that's another issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you reconfigure those lanes, the, I guess blending in to the existing lanes there is going to be too abrupt if we put in, you know, forty-two to forty-five spaces. I mean, we could go back a few spaces and blend it in and not modify the quiet zone, but you're going to lose five spaces, six spaces, something like that.
Might be worth it, though.
Depending on the arrangements that we're able to work out.
Right.
We don't want to mess with the quiet zone, that's so valuable.
Well, we may have to adjust it. We wouldn't, wouldn't want to do anything that kept us from being able to maintain a quiet zone.
Right, I think you could still adjust the median and move it so it was in the correct position with the lanes, but it'd just be some reconstruction. It'd be whether you'd want to put up the cost to reconstruct the median or just simply leave six or seven spaces off.
Okay, I got you now.
Now, as Jesse's kind of talked about this, we've met with developers, Jesse Caston this time has talked about this. We've met with the developers on what they're looking at in terms of what's acceptable for them to invest in a project down here. It seemed like, as we talked with them, that if we could have a, if we could identify the sixty-five, seventy spots, that that would be a position where they'd feel that they could move forward with at least the one facility.
Yeah.
And that we can do just with, with the angled parking and using the available spots in the parking lot immediately west of the fire station.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The second facility is, as they talked about that second building and we looked at options, the two prime spots that we can really use to address that is if we're able to work something out with BNSF, or taking our existing lot south of US Bank Building and going up a second story there. As we talked about those with the developers, they really didn't seem too interested in having a parking ramp and being in that location. They, now maybe if that's what we came down to as an alternative, that we could actually get something worked out on, they'd say that that was okay. They really did prefer the BNSF lot over that, just for location compared to where their structures are. It doesn't look to me like it's that much different, but they're the ones investing the money in the buildings. As you look at those two different potentials, though, did you come up with even ballparks, Jesse, for what the two different options would be?
I haven't got to ballpark them yet.
If you think about BNSF's lot, that's probably in the, I threw out a number of maybe five hundred thousand between acquisition and getting the paving done in there.
Yeah, I think that's probably pretty close, as close as we're going to get at this stage in the game.
And if you think about a hundred and fifty slots in there, I mean, that, you can just about, we can come up with the funds to pay that if that's what we're looking to do. But as you think about that over time, a hundred and fifty spots, if it's thirty bucks a month, you've got forty-five, forty-five?
Forty-five thousand.
So fifty-four thousand a year. In the course of nine years, you've covered the cost of that, or somewhere in that kind of timeframe. It's, you're not making money, long-term, you're not going to be making money out of this, but you can kind of cover your costs on a long-term basis with that. The parking ramp is not going to be the same thing. I don't, without, until we get a number from our engineering department.
I ventured to guess you're going to be three-quarters of a million to a million dollars, something like that.
I'm putting it at more, in the, I was thinking more like three million dollars to go a second level in a ramp.
It's not like, not like Washington over here, you could build a second level with an entrance right off Washington. This one, you have to build the.
And, and I know he's, you're taking that, you're looking at, when we talked about a second level on the other spot. The Washington and Sixth, or?
Yeah, Washington and Sixth, I believe that number was like three hundred and sixty.
To put the second level on.
Right.
And it's a smaller footprint, and so maybe your numbers are closer than what mine are, but you're still going to be a significantly higher figure than what the, if we're able to get to.
BNSF or somebody. Okay.
But it also puts it up to, you've got to, over the course of the next few months, make a decision from a council's perspective if you're willing to partner with them in making this happen.
Yeah, so I think as part of their process here, you know, before they take on, you know, the whole, all the building purchase and everything with both buildings, because they're still going to buy both at the same time, is that they at least want a commitment that, hey, you know, we're willing to look. I think that we can deliver sixty to sixty-five stalls. There'd be a agreed-pronged price as far as, you know, whether it's permit parking or monthly parking, that the city would get paid from it. But they have to have some kind of commitment on, you know, whether parking can be provided or.
Yeah.
And they're going to be coming in here to a work session, right?
They're, yeah, they're planning, that way they can, because I told them, I really don't like to talk about somebody else's company and try to tell their story. So they were hoping to come in two weeks, and they were still looking at their calendars, but that way they can talk about their company and then answer any questions that you may have about them and, you know, in regards to that. But we wanted to get the conversation started because we are going to be on a timeline here with it. And with this as well, I think it's probably prudent to mention that, you know, there would probably be, you know, a year, possibly a little bit less before construction started, and then probably a year after that before it's done. So, but they need, they need a commitment to later, but I'm saying there would be probably, you know, eighteen months or so before they actually would need those stalls. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Jason Hutchison does continue to work with the railroad. I think he's been in contact with them weekly basis over the course of the last month, and they have made progress. The fact that you have three different maps of the lot there speaks to the fact that they've been talking about with the railroad.
Which is nice.
About different options that they might be willing to consider. The twenty-five or fifty-foot buffer is something that the railroad was looking at. If we can look at having that buffer, there's a potential that it could be realistic. That's not necessarily an easy process to go through because they have several different divisions that all have to approve something along the way.
And, yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I just saw Chief Trexel back there, and I just wondered if he has, we want to get his input on this whole thing too before, before we make, whether you want to give up that lot, or whether you like those parking spaces along Valley, or.
We weren't looking at giving up theirs.
Are you still keeping those parking places?
None of, as we talked about there being twenty-four spots, we're talking about spots that are the, more like the hourly or unrated.
So they're not, okay, they're not, yes, okay.
No.
All right.
And for the, you know, if we understand everything correctly, with the initial commitment that they're looking for, those angled parking on Valley, whether it's forty or forty-two spots and the twenty-five extra satisfies them from everything they indicated next week to move forward.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan.
But it's more, I mean, we're kind of talking about the whole scope here because I think it's important to bring it up now because it's a process. And I think, I mean, personally, like I said, even if you take this development out, I think that parking's something that we need to consider.
Okay.
He was good?
Thank you for all your work, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Downtown is bustling.
Minority recruiting.
In your packet, and I didn't change that. Do you want to pull up? Maybe Eric and Matt can get it to come up here so they can see it at home. Basically, I just started with kind of like a laundry list of things that we've been doing to try to recruit minorities at the city for all different positions. So I know the last couple of years, we've been participating at the city day at the park. I think that kind of showcases most of the departments. We do have, you know, of course, fire and police are there with their equipment, which is great. The wastewater treatment plant has set up little experiments with things that they do down there, the library, streets were there last year, the mayor's office. I think it's a good way, it's a free event that people can come to, children, adults, and everyone to see exactly what we do at the city. Also, on this, what I've attached is the police department's efforts to what they've done. And Doug had provided this list of all the things that they've been doing, I think, over the years. This isn't anything new that they've been doing, some of it might be, that's the next sheet. And I know Doug can maybe expand on a little bit more and where the fire department also participates in these programs.
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. Good evening. Just to highlight a couple, and first and foremost, one of the biggest things we're going to try to do this summer is we're going to hold an actual youth academy, like we're doing the citizens' police academy. We're going to do one, an all-day event for as many youth as we can get there possibly to also spur interest in police and police jobs and make sure that that's open to everybody and try to draw some people to that event. So that's hopefully really going to be a big draw for us as well. Mostly, everything on this list, I've kind of talked about. I think everybody's fairly familiar with it. Just to touch a little bit on the pieces program, I included in here our CSI evening that we have, the crime scene investigation. And I've actually had the opportunity to participate in some of that during the pieces, during the high-risk program, to actually get into fingerprinting, building searches, some of the things we do, again, just to spur interest in what we do other than just going through their homework and every other normal thing that we do. So we've incorporated that CSI piece into that.
How long have you guys been doing the pieces?
This is probably year four, three under the grant, but I think this is our fourth total year of being involved in that program. The recruiting committee, I mean, that's been a major project of ours, and we continue to work at that constantly, where we actually went out and reached out into the community and talked to people that would know, that are in the minority community, the gentleman's club, the NAACP. We actually have a committee now that includes high school students that are minorities out there. And the questions we bring up are, what are the things that we can do to improve our recruiting process, or what are we doing wrong? And for the first time last year, we tried one of their ideas. They had an idea that, well, like when you come to Juneteenth and you come to some of our functions, you come in uniform. And I'm like, well, yeah, I want to come in uniform because I want you to know that the police is here to support you. And they said, yeah, but we want you to be a person like everybody else. And so try to come in plain clothes and see if that changes things, and the interaction completely changed. It wasn't that people didn't know you were from the police department. I mean, of course, they know that, but how that changed the interaction. So, I mean, we're trying to employ or deploy some of the ideas that are, that are given to us through this committee.
Didn't you show off your legs last year?
No, I even gave up the free throw thing. I didn't want to do that to you again, so I just kind of let that slide. No, just kidding. So, as you can see the list, like I said, again, most of the stuff I've talked about. But, I mean, we're attending now the Justice and Disparities Summit in Ankeny. We've done that the last three years, which is extremely helpful. Major Grimshaw goes up there and talks to other communities and what they're doing, what their disparities, and how they're going about it. So, I mean, that's always really helpful to know what the people around you are doing. So that's an important conference that we started to attend. And obviously, our criminal justice program at SCC. But I'll let you, I'm not going to stand up here and read through the list. So if you have any questions about the list, though, feel free to ask what the bullet point might be, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions, but Chief, I did want to say, just want to give a shout out to you and Major. I know it's a teamwork, but I just want to give a shout out to you and Major Grimshaw. You guys have done a fantastic job down there. I know all the stuff you guys do behind the scenes, so just want to give you a thumbs up, appreciate it.
Well, thank you. There's a big enough to come for the Fourth of July, we're working hard on that too, so that'll be, that'll be a big day.
Right on, right on.
So back on the main sheet, another thing that we did this year that we hadn't done in the past was attend an Iowa workforce event, and that's where they try to get people, all different backgrounds, people that are unemployed, people looking for a job. It was held at Pizzazz in February. So we attended, we tried to let people know how to sign up on our website for future openings, and we went over the openings that we currently had in February. And then also, we do have an affirmative action contact list. So that's right after the police stuff, Eric, if you could scroll back towards that. So with this list, every time the city has a job opening, everybody on this sheet is actually either mailed or emailed the actual job posting. So the postings you see around here or online go to all these different churches, all these different community places. And if there's anybody out there in the community that would like to get these, that may not be on that list, if they could contact the human resources department, you know, my department, Becky, call Becky or Stephanie at the city, we can get you on that list. You know, some prefer to have it emailed, and then others, like I said, we do a mailing. And as we were here tonight, you know, we're really trying to use Facebook now because that's where we're going to reach some of the younger generation. We, you know, pushed out two ads today. We have a part-time opening in our vehicle maintenance department, and we have a full-time opening in our accounting department for our payroll accounts receivable clerk. So those just went out this afternoon as we try to share with our other Facebook departments, maybe tomorrow. I know the police have a great big following, so if they would share that post maybe tomorrow or the next day, we can hit as many people that way to people that aren't, you know, going to read it in the Hawkeye or see it on our website, so. But again, if anybody's on that list, that would, or anybody else that wants to be added, but we try to hit other avenues there. And then lastly, something we hadn't done in the past too, is we did, the Hawkeye had an employment flyer that it was just a kind of a handout in the paper in February of 2017, too. And instead of just posting the openings, we tried to really post the information to sign up on our website. So people can go in, basically, you would give the, you give us our email, you set up an account, and then you check the boxes of the positions you want to know when we have openings. So if you were only interested in the accounting job and you signed up for it, when we posted that job tonight on our website, you would have gotten an email saying, hey, there's a job in the city for accounting. And then it would give them the information on how to apply. So that is the last page, Eric, on that handout. Basically, this was the ad that went into that, the flyer, that was really showing you exactly the explanation how to sign up. And then at the bottom, we just put, here's what we have right now. So again, this was in February, we were hiring for our seasonals, and then we had part-time transit operators, so. Does anybody have any questions on what we're doing? We're always open for suggestions on anything else you think we could be doing, so.
Chief, you also, I don't know, maybe you addressed this and I didn't pay attention. Is your training program, if you provide any additional assistance out there for those, anyone who's looking to try to get to where they can pass a test or prepare for a test?
Oh, yeah, great, yeah, I should have brought that up. It was actually on the list through workforce development, but, I mean, in the past, the state sets a standard for the written and physical test. We have no options. We order those tests, they come sealed, the test is what it is. But with that said. But with that said, we thought, well, is there a way you can study for the test? And so they have put out a study guide, they put out sample tests, and we got with workforce development. And anybody that has struggled with the test in the past, we've got that set up so they can go out to workforce development, and they can take sample tests, and they can actually read some of the questions that they're going to have to answer, and if they're struggling, they got people in place out there to help them. And it is an example, some of the problems are word problems. I mean, a lot of people, like in mathematics, understand obviously how to add and subtract and divide and multiply, but when you put that problem into a word problem that's a paragraph long, it becomes a little bit confusing. And if you can't comprehend exactly what they're asking, pretty soon those numbers become confusing, and you don't know, oh, well, am I adding these numbers, am I subtracting, am I dividing? So they're providing with that help, the key words and some of those phrases, look for key words, and when you see those words, you know you have to add. When you see these words, you know you have to subtract. So, yeah, we are trying to provide that training and some extra, putting some extra things in place for people to prepare for the test. Thanks for bringing that up, I didn't forget nothing.
Awesome. Well done, well done. Okay, next we have TIF policy.
This is essentially on here as, at the request of a council member, so. I turned it over to her to...
Yep, so, I mean, initially, we all see, not all of us, but it seemed to be going well for a development that requested using TIF. And I know a few, a few of you had said, well, what happens in the future when somebody else wants to come do this? We should have some sort of a policy. And it was like, that would probably be a great idea to talk about. But I guess if there is no desire to talk about that, or no desire to have a policy because you got, because the council does not want to use TIF in that fashion at all ever, I just wanted to bring that up because I thought there was a desire for creating a policy or doing something along those lines. I mean, I, I'm a little confused why everything went all, there was no negative, not a lot of negative feedback for the development and even make zoning it to where it could be, toward TIF could be used in that area, and then, then it was shut down.
I think it'd be difficult to formulate a firm policy because every circumstance is different. I mean, here we have an issue where the city's well-defined that we have a housing shortage in a critical price range, and I've given this a lot of consideration. I gave a lot of it before the meeting, and I've given a lot more after the meeting. And frankly, I've, I've got a change of mind, and, and I'm hoping I get you to agree to put this back on the agenda for a future meeting and to revisit it. To me, it's a good program, and I'd just like to see us reconsider it. That's my wish, anyway.
Reconsider the original proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it also stands out to me so much more than any other kind of housing proposal because there is a lot to give back to the community.
Right.
It's just, I mean, I have never had anybody say, you know, they want to help support the trades program, which is a dying, dying program in all of the US that really needs to be addressed because we all can't be executive directors and CEOs of companies. Who's going to build the buildings? Who's going, you know, laborers are very important. There is no shame in that, in any sense.
Amen to that, amen to that.
And I just think that that's something that really needs to be brought to light, and if there is a developer who wants to nurture that, I, I want to give them as much as we can in a respectable manner to help support that.
Let me ask this, just so we can get down to the, to the tape of this. Do we have a consensus of, to have this brought back up, the, what we, what we had presented before?
Where are you, where are you, where are you going here? We're talking about TIF policy.
Well, that was the discussion, but she just, she just brought that up. I wanted to see if, if I had a consensus of bringing that back up, otherwise we're going to...
Well, I got off the policy there.
Yeah, it was actually...
And I, I'm going back to what we voted on a week or two ago relative to the Fourteenth Street deal. And I've given it a lot of thought, I've talked to a number of people since then, and I would hope that I could get you to agree to put it back on the agenda, let us vote again. I know that's a unique approach, but I'm, I'm just asking.
And, and again, I'm just looking to see if we have consensus for wanting to have that added back to the agenda.
Right, right.
Because if not, then we need...
Right, I mean, I, I would love to have it put back on the agenda, but I also feel the need that there does need to be some sort of a policy. And whether it's something as simple as, you know, I don't, I don't know. Some of the things that I would like to see in a policy like that, as far as using TIF for residential or some sort of development in that sense, it's non-traditional, is maybe, oh, if there's been property annexed into the Burlington area, or if you've had residency in Burlington for ten years or something. I know that seems very...
I think that's really, really hard to come up with a policy that you're going to...
If you're going to, having a policy is kind of tough.
Right.
I mean, even a hundred, if you're saying, we just had the housing study done a year ago, and it identified a need for housing under a hundred and sixty thousand, or, well, no, a hundred and eighty thousand one set and then two sixty for the second.
Right.
It identified those two different characteristics of, of housing that are just not getting addressed.
Could we create a policy then that dies after so many years?
You'd have to have it fairly soon, just in terms of what happened, what, I mean, it may be that you're, you have, you can get five years down the road and the dynamics are still the same. In fact, I wouldn't be too surprised if that wasn't the case.
Right.
But you also want to have the option that you can see circumstances change over a five-year timeframe, that you have a different environment. And if you have a policy that's, that's rigid in there, it, it, it's a little, it's a little bit hard to, to, it has to be able to be adjusted over time. The development that was brought forward last week had another characteristic with it, that it, the amount of street structure, infrastructure outside of the subdivision that was necessary to get constructed to reach the subdivision, and the ability to use that into our overall street system as time goes on. And I don't know what the dollar amount of cost was towards it, but I'd say it was probably in a quarter of a million dollar range that was that infrastructure. That might be on the high end, but it's in that neighborhood. Next subdivision may not have that same type of infrastructure need. So, so there's some unique characteristics that can impact whether you may have a decision on that or not. Was talking just with development staff, actually, not Eric, but Charlie, just in term, from his perspective, we've got some infill lots that, that are areas that, that would be good to see get developed because there, there are, the infrastructure's already around it and is appropriate to see use the existing infrastructure. Now, you had a subdivision that came forward a year and a half ago, looking to develop in one of those areas, and there was concern about the amount of, how concentrated the housing was. Well, maybe you want to see that area get developed with a little bit larger lot sizes, and you create a TIF structure that would be, as an incentive, that would, if you can get a certain price point, use that area or an area similar to that and make sure that it hits some specific quality of life standards that you're concerned about be a part of that.
To me, that makes a lot of sense then. I mean, because if, if we are wanting to do, if we have a lot of infill lots that we want developed, then...
I don't know that you have a tremendous amount of those infill lots, but you, and...
But if there are some that...
There are some.
That do need to be developed, then I don't see why we wouldn't want to encourage that.
The issue becomes how do you write a policy that's going to...
And I think you want to be fairly generic because you may have some different, different areas may have some different needs that are associated with them.
My question was addressing that too, just about infill. What is, is on the policy is, we, we had that, we had that study done, could we do it in numbers? Could we make policy according to numbers to try to meet a need and say, that's what I, when, you know, when it came up, I was thinking, well, instead of a timeframe, don't we want to address the numbers and say, hey, we're, we're going to offer up a policy for this amount for these, for these type of houses, you know, over a period of time, just...
I think that, I guess in terms of generic policy, if you're saying that we've identified within the housing study that these, these are the areas where there's gaps, we're interested in trying to do what we can to fill them over, and set that as a policy that is, you're going to have to be in a position to review if it's three years down the road, or, or have a defined timeframe where you review it, and, but don't put too many terms around what you're willing to do, but that you're at least willing to consider that as an option, given, given the circumstances.
It's going to have to be broad in that.
So I guess, I guess what I would like to see then, me personally, is maybe a, a generic policy, but that ties into the housing study, and that also has like an expiration date, or we have to revisit it in so many years. And whether it's two years or more, I mean, I almost, I, I would like to see a shorter timeframe, just because if a lot of people hear about this, and a lot of people get excited, and we see a big boom in development, but, you know, that's just my hopes. So I don't, I don't know where everyone else sits.
Nobody else?
I just know that our, our policy, council's policy for years and years and years was to focus incentives on infill development and try to avoid urban sprawl. And this is, this is the opposite of that. If that's, if that's what's going to change, then let's, let's change it as a policy in, in, in a direction that the council's going to take. I just, I just want to know what direction we're going to take and, and then, then how we're going to fund the, the services in that area for ten or fifteen or twenty years, whatever the length is of time, how we're going to fund those services. That's what I'm hearing from my constituents. I, I don't know about the rest of you, but they're, they're, they're concerned about the ability to, about their taxes going up and about giving away ten years in taxes. Of course, that, that money really doesn't belong to anybody, it's pretty easy to give it away, so.
I'll be honest with you, I got, I'm, I'm open for revisiting. All I got was talked about for not, not being with the, not being with it, and I'll be honest with you, this is not my strong point, you know, TIF and, and development, so I don't want to act like I'm somebody that I'm not, or to act like I have obtained something that I have not yet obtained. But from, from what I'm hearing and from, from everybody all the way down, I'm, I'm hearing that it's not a, it's not a bad deal. I have to agree with Annie, I do like the fact that you were reinvesting in Burlington. I'm all about that, and I, you know, don't think that I was poo-pooing on you. You're a winner, my friend. But, but there's a need, and it's not going to happen on infill. We're, we're not going to meet those numbers with infill, that's not going to happen. So is there a consensus with...
Yes.
With, with either, well, where are we at? Do we, do we want to try to find policies so we can just go ahead and attack this and say, hey, you know, let's deal with this, and this is what we want to do, or...
Well, I think the policy might take a little bit longer for us to figure out. But I, I do want to see something, you know, staff work something up, you know, whatever you think would be appropriate, but also, I am in favor of being able to put the, the development back on the agenda to vote on.
And so do I, as two. Three, okay.
Let's put it back on.
Can we have that on?
I'll have to talk with bonding attorney about how we deal with this.
Man, you're pushy today, aren't you?
May not be on next council meeting.
Yeah, I have to find out how we deal with that.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks Annie.
You should have brought that up at a different time, maybe at the end of this discussion. I know this is the last thing, but the discussion was, was about TIF policy and not about whether we were going to...
Right.
...revisit an issue. Or, if, if, if Mike Pearson comes forward and wants to develop the property that's east of where he's at, it's already a part of Burlington, it's already been annexed in the city, is he going to be entitled to the same TIF financing if he builds the hundred and sixty to two hundred and eighty thousand dollar homes?
I recommend that you move forward a similar...
And if Floyd Fola comes forward and wants to build...
Now, the one thing that I would throw in there is, one of the factors in here is the amount of street infrastructure, and it may be that you have, have someone else that has that same level of street infrastructure to get to a subdivision to make it happen.
Jim, I'm not going to buy that. It's the, the, the development, the design, design decision is the developers and, and where they choose to, to build out, and the urban sprawl is, is a natural part of that. I think if, if we're going to do for one developer, then the, the parameters need to be a little less narrow than, than that.
I'm not, I'm not asking...
It looks, sounds like we're trying to make this TIF policy fit a certain development.
I'm not asking that to be the, the only factor. I'm just saying that the, if you think about level of how much you're willing to give in a TIF rebate, you may adjust based off of different circumstances. Now, and you may choose to think that it, decide that ultimately you want to give the same. That's, that's fine, but I think that part of that discussion needs to be, what are those, some of those ancillary things that go in with it.
And, and I think we, we set a precedent by approving this particular development. Now, you, you're, you're really going to have a hard time saying no to the next person that comes along, whether, whomever it happens to be.
If it's apples and apples, why, why would you? But that's why I, I still like the, the policy, because again, what are, we had that study done, how many do we need? Because we don't want to set this up so that we've got all of these houses and, and everybody gets up to want to try to build, you know, a, a ton of these. I mean, I, I like the, I like the fact that you brought up policy because if we are going to deal with this, let's go ahead and look at that report, and let's say, how many actually do we need? You know what I'm saying? Do we, we need about twenty-five of these, you know, and we need, and so whoever the developers are, you want to build twenty-five of these, first guy that steps up, you know, let's, let's lock it in. But to me, that's, that was the whole purpose of this, was to meet the need of the study that we had done.
I think we're getting into dangerous territory though by picking, like we say, winners and losers every time we do that, because the market ought to, ought to determine how many houses somebody has to get.
That's what I think.
So that's another issue, in my view.
Yep.
Anyway.
Well, to, to bringing him up, I felt like it was, that they kind of ran into each other, so I didn't see that there was an issue with that, so.
I see what you're saying.
Number, number eight, though, we'll go ahead and move on tonight. Sidewalk width. Mr. McGregor.
A little bit of conversation on sidewalk widths. Our right-of-way permits are filled out through our engineering department. We have probably approved a, we, well, I should rephrase that. We have approved a blanket permit with Alliant. So in theory, we have approved permits for one panel to re, re-replace at fifty inches wide. I can show you an example of what a permit looks like. I also have the code printed off. My fear with, with not in, having people install fifty-inch sidewalks, it goes directly against city code, and I have no discretion to, in the code, to approve a permit to install a replacement panel at forty-eight inches. The code specifically calls out fifty, so I, I guess I don't know what else to talk about. I just know that it was brought up about a fifty-inch panel being installed. I would have, we would have heard if we were having a private resident replace panels, and it was one at fifty inches, as to what the purpose was, and that probably would have started another conversation. I can see where through Alliant's blanket permit that it was approved, we essentially approved one in, or one panel at fifty inches. That being said, if, if it's the desire to have it, you know, those panels at forty-eight and have that discretion be in my office, I, I have a little hard time understanding on where I draw the line on what number of panels are acceptable. where I draw the line on what number of panels are acceptable.
You also have spots where, if you have a 36-inch side, existing sidewalk and someone replaces one panel, do you make them go to the 50 or 48, or does it go back to the existing?
The existing should be 36, in my opinion.
And that's kind of how you've handled it typically with most of?
Yep.
So what's the issue here?
Well, the issue came, I don't know what, Tim had, you had an issue of someone who brought forward that they had to go back to 50?
A contractor that done a sewer replacement, said that he was told he had to put in a 50-inch sidewalk.
For one panel?
For one panel.
And that's, and that's typical, do you have any information on that, Jesse?
I just got one, Mitchells or whatever, whoever they are, they just did the work for Alliant, they had to do some work and they had to replace a panel for me, and it is just a little bit, yeah, it's a little wider, but, you know.
Well, and I could say, I've done a fair amount of right-of-way permits, and everybody that asks me whether it's one panel, five panels, 10 panels, it's 50 inches wide because that's what our ordinance says. It's pretty black and white in the ordinance, and that's what I've been going after because I look it up in the code, city code, and that's what I tell them.
That's not my point in bringing it up, counsel. I, I brought it up because there's some common sense that we can do as a council to, to direct that. And if there's, 48 is what ADA asked for, what, what's required. Because I don't want contractors put in a position of having to tear out a 47 and a half inch sidewalk, I suggested that we go to a 50 inch. And then if it happens to be less than 50 inch, we've got a little bit of wiggle room because it is more than 48 inches. It's just, it's simplistic thinking on my part. I know that people that, that work by the code, for the code, with the code, have a hard time understanding that, I guess. If, if it's a 48-inch sidewalk, or if it's a 38, 36-inch sidewalk, ADA requires 48-inch sidewalk.
That's correct.
We require a 50-inch just to protect, the only reason we've done it, the only reason I suggested it was to protect the, the developer. If necessary, I suggest we just go back to a 48 inch and eliminate all that. And then if the contractor accidentally builds it at 47 and a half inches, he'll just have to tear out the sidewalk and rebuild it.
That'd be my recommendation.
I mean, it's, it wasn't meant to be something hard, it was just a myth, well, just brought it up to protect the developers.
When it's an existing sidewalk that's 36 inches and it's one panel that gets taken out, is that something that should be going to handicap width of 48 for one panel? That's, that's part of the question that...
If that's what, if that's what ADA is, I mean, that's what I'm, what...
That's, that's, that's a gray area with the 36, replacing it with one panel.
Yeah, that's not going to do it.
I don't have a problem with it personally, I'm just saying, what was brought to us by the staff was that the 48 inches what a, is what the ADA's requirement is, and they're pulling funding from us if it's not 48 inches, if they come out on a project. So that's all I was concerned about, was addressing that...
Sure.
...concern and not having to have developers have to go through it again.
I think part of, if they're, I mean, the, from the staff perspective, the 48 versus 50 isn't an issue. They, they though, I don't, I think, and I guess you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, the flexibility to not force a, a one-panel replacement, because you do get some of those short distances that...
Right.
Forcing someone to go to that larger distance serves absolutely no practical purpose. And we'd like to, if we could, if we're going to revisit the issue, we'd like to somehow revisit some of that to give a little bit more flexibility there too, so that we're not forcing people to go to something that...
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
That's what I was asking, just give them whatever the sidewalk is.
Right.
And I don't know what, if we have a good hard and fast, or if we can come up with some wording for a judgment call allowed by...
An alteration to the ordinance? In, in the sidewalk standards, it gives me the authority to approve a material other than PCC, so I could approve a brick sidewalk. But in there, it does not have any language about the widths, and if desired, I, you know, that could be an ordinance change.
And we, we'd have to talk with, if we can talk with the attorney possibly on some wording to give a little bit of flexibility within there, because the hard and fast makes absolutely no sense.
And from a logistical standpoint, if we could change it back to 48, that would be much easier. We're costing ourselves more on our own projects. For instance, we have designed agency as 50-inch sidewalk. So, I mean, we can't really barter politically here, but from a logistical standpoint...
Thank you, sir.
It's a lot easier.
Where are you from again? Who is this guy?
But, well, if that's okay, we'll bring it forward, trying to accommodate both of those things.
Do that, do that.
Is that okay?
That sounds good. You guys have any issues with appointments?
I don't.
Nope.
Okay. That's our meeting tonight. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Good night. Sessman?
Joe.
We need somebody for the show. For the show. Any volunteers?
Was it this Wednesday?
Four hours a day, seven days a week, right now.
If no one else is available, I'll make myself.
Wednesday, I can't Wednesday.